I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt an agenda.
I'll second.
Motion being second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to rescind my vote from the Lever Street signage.
You want to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Is that what I need to do?
I believe so. Chris, is that?
That would be appropriate to add. It has been noticed, but it's not on the agenda. So if you want to amend the agenda to add a vote to rescind, that would be appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to... What am I doing?
Amend the agenda.
Amend the agenda to add a motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Jack, I'm looking on the agenda where it would go.
We do have an item under 7.0G2. It's the resolution for Google Maps to amend the directions for the routes, if you want to add it to that discussion. We can add it as a new item.
How we insert it in between 1 and 2? We made amended. That'd be number 2, then number 2 becomes number 3. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. So now back to the original motion on the agenda now as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Wow, that goes a lot faster. Presentations. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 4.0, Resolution 2021-35, approving the modification to development program for Development District Number 1 and establishing a tax increment finance district number 1-5. The city is considering establishment of a tax increment finance district, an economic development district to facilitate a 36,000-square-foot expansion to Aggressive Hydraulics' existing facility. The district consists of one parcel, as noted in the table below in your packet, and incorporates all adjacent and internal right-of-ways. Aggressive Hydraulics manufactures custom-built hydraulic sent cylinders and has a regional, national, and global customer base. Aggressive Hydraulics was founded in 2002 and operated in Blaine until 2013. The operation in Blaine is spread over three separate small buildings, and to address their growth needs, they constructed a 60,000-square-foot facility in East Bethel, which opened in 2013. Their initial employment was 45, and they have grown to 66 employees. Their expansion will add an additional 20 employees to their workforce. The proposed project will have a significant economic impact within the city and county and include, but be not limited to, the following: a $2.8 million building addition project, which has been contracted to a local general contractor; associated spending at local businesses during the project construction; 20 new full-time equivalent jobs with an average base wage of $23 an hour with benefits; employment of local vendors for various service contracts for the ongoing operations of the facility; the multiplier effect of their corporate and employee spending in the local economy; payment of part dedication fees, trunk sewer charges, sewer and water access charges, and charges for water and sewer usage to the city; increased property taxes to the city, county, and school district upon the decertification of the TIF note and retention of a business that is of value, corporate, citizen, and the community. The duration of this district will be eight years after the receipt of the first increment payment, which is anticipated in 2023. Thus, it is estimated the district would terminate at the earlier of the satisfaction of the pay-as-you-go note and interfund loan on December 31, 2032. However, if the first increment received earlier than expected in 2022, the district would terminate on December 31, 2030. TIF District 1-1 was created for the original Aggressive Hydraulics project in 2013 and decertified its complete in December 2020. This was a nine-year note for $225,000 and is paid off in seven years. The Aggressive Hydraulics addition will provide significant monetary contributions to the local economy and enhance the marketing effects of the city for other development opportunities. This project is consistent with the city's 2040 comprehensive plan. The budget exhibited in your packet is the maximum amount, meaning, over the term of the district, the amount of tax increment collected may not exceed what is noted for the project cost, which is $339,585. If that were to happen, the city would be required to modify the budget, which would entail going through the entire notification and public hearing process as if the city were considering the establishment of a new district. In order to alleviate this as a future consideration in cost, Ellers has added an annual inflation to increase the budget. The city EDA will retain 10% of the tax increment generated for administrative costs of the district. In addition, it should be mentioned that the budget does not resemble the amount of assistance being provided to the Aggressive Hydraulics for expansion of their facility. The actual amount of assistance will be $190,000 in the form as a pay-as-you-go TIF note. The terms of the assistance and the overall provisions regarding issuance of a pay-as-you-go TIF note are contained within the TIF agreement, which is exhibited in Attachment 5 in your packet. This time, staff is recommending that City Council consider approving Resolution 2021-35, approving the modification to the development program for Development District Number 1 and establishing tax increment finance district number 1-5 within the Development District Number 1 and approving the tax increment financing plan, therefore, an authorizing an interfund loan and authorizing execution of a development agreement. We also have Ms. Stacy Quilling from Ellers here, who can answer any questions on anything that you may have on the note itself and any of the processes involved in this. So at this time, staff recommends consideration of approval of Resolution 2021-35.
Just for clarification, in your recommendation, there's that, and then there's also... Unless I'm reading this wrong. It sounds like there's a tax increment financing plan. Is that separate or is it part of the motion?
It's part of the motion. All these are part of the motion.
And then the development agreement that was provided tonight?
That's correct.
That's part of the resolution as well?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So we just need a motion on the resolution as presented on page 51 of our packet.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-35, resolution approving the modification to the development program for Development District Number 1 and establishing tax increment financing district number 1-5, Aggressive Hydraulics 2 within Development District Number 1, approving the tax increment financing plan, therefore, authorizing an interfund loan and authorizing execution of a development agreement.
I'll second.
Motion being second. Discussion.
I have some comments. First, I've understood that TIFs are designed for redevelopment-uplighted urban areas. I think East Bethel uses it as a stretch when a successful business is using it for expansion. Because, for one, I don't understand why they can't just get the loan and pay off the loan, because as tax values increase, I think we would get more tax monies in the whole stretch of this time span. The future plans for the area will result in increased value of the land, which would result in increased taxes taken in by the city, because everybody else is going to get a tax hike regardless. So I don't understand why they can't just get a loan and just expand. That being said, before... I want to ask all my questions. Page 3 says it's guaranteeing 20 jobs. The agreement says 10. The average wage on page 3 says $23 an hour. The agreement says 1875. The operation in the city is for five years, but the TIF is for eight years. So I think it should say five years after the TIF is paid off. Because what if they close shop? I mean, I just think some of this is contradicting itself. So those are my questions. I don't know if you want me to go back and issue each one one by one.
Stacy can probably answer those directly.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Stacy Quilling with Ellers and Associates, the municipal advisor for you guys on this tax increment project. Mayor, just a point of order, I just want to remind you that this is a public hearing as well, so you'll have to make sure to open the public hearing to get public comment as well with regards to this. So to your questions that you have... So first, your question was with regards to doing this for economic development. So tax increment can be done for economic development. There's specifically a nine-year TIF district for this. It's been contemplated. It's been used widely. And really what it's for, it's about expansion or creation of jobs and expansion of your workforce. And so that's what you're doing here. So it's used routinely throughout the metropolitan area on the greenfield development sites that we have. Two, with regards to the number of jobs. So you have a business assistance policy says that they must create at least one full-time at 150% of the median... federal minimum wage at the time that they are creating it. And so essentially, what we put into the agreement is that they must create a minimum of 10 jobs. They have stated that they may get as far as 20 jobs, but their minimum requirement for their assistance is 10 jobs, but we think that they'll exceed that. And right now, 150% for the small business minimum wage is 1875, so that's the requirement. So the number that's actually in the agreement is the correct wage that they have to pay. We do anticipate that they'll likely exceed that with many of the jobs that they have there on site. Is that all of your questions?
Well, pretty much, because why are there two different numbers then? I mean, why does it say that the proposed project will create 20 new full-time equivalent jobs at the base wage of $23 an hour with benefits? And then the agreement says 1875 and 10 jobs. So if this said 10 jobs and 1875 with up to $23, I wouldn't have a problem with it. It's just the two different numbers bothers me. I'm just analytical where those... Some discrepancies bother me. Some things go right over my head.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, to that effect. So essentially, when we work with businesses, they say what their ideal is, that they want to get two new jobs and what they think may happen. And then we have things like pandemics come along or other issues. So we're not holding their feet to the fire for the higher number. That's why you have a lower number that's actually in there. They discuss that their wages may be as high as 23, so that's why that number's there. But really, what they're required per your policy is 1875 as a minimum, so they will exceed that.
The information on the $23 an hour and 20 jobs was supplied to the city by Aggressive Hydraulics. When we prepared these original reports, and as Stacy said, what's reflected in the agreement is the minimum they have to meet.
And then, Mayor, Councilmember, I think your other question was about the five years that they have to be in business. So that's statutory requirement. So that's why that's in there. So once that they are in business and they receive their tax increment, they are required to be there for a minimum of five years. I think what you found from them, being a corporate business owner in your community, they've been here already for 12 years, or, you know, so we do anticipate that they'll go forward. If, in fact, they were not in business after five years, their tax increment would cease, and there's also a clawback provision with regards to payment of assistance.
All right. Well, thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
Stacy, when you started, you said something about a public hearing?
Yeah, Mayor, this is essentially a public hearing that you're hosting on the creation and establishment of the TIF district, so it was notified as a public hearing. So that's why it's under your public hearing, Presentations and Public Hearing section that you have of this.
But this wasn't advertised as a public hearing, was it?
Yes, it was, and I forgot to mention that.
It's not in the write-up at all?
No, it's not in the write-up.
Okay.
Yep, but it was noticed in all some paper.
So it was advertised, though, as a public hearing?
Yeah, there should be a notice of the public hearing in your packet that was published.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, we will open a public hearing for establishment of this TIF district. Is anyone here interested tonight on this matter? Like to speak to council? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Back to council for discussion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you for catching that, Stacy.
Thanks, Stacy.
Onto consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt Nate's consent agenda. I'd like to pull item E as an Edward.
I'll second, and I'd like to pull item L.
I'd also like to pull item E as an Edward.
Good, and then I'd like to pull item A and item H.
And I'd like to pull some that I thought we had before discussion.
What letter?
A, E, G, H, J, and L.
Okay, can you go through that slowly? I got to make sure I got them all. A?
E, G, H, J, L.
Okay. So we have B, C, D, F, and I, and K remaining. Any further discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Did you have something on item A, Suzanne?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. Suzanne, could you pull your microphone down a little bit? They're closer to you.
All right, can everybody hear me better? Okay, thank you, sorry. All right, bills list. I have just a couple of questions. So my first question is on page 60, under assessing. Why are we paying for second quarter '22, or is that a typo?
That's the assessment that he has done now is based for the year 2022.
Oh, okay.
It's a year in advance, so whoever gets the next contract will receive a bill on that for 2025. Everything's done for next year's assessment stuff.
I get it. Okay, thank you. My next question is on page 62. Professional service fees. It says mayor, city council, Munich Code. I don't know what that means.
Munich Code is the company that we use to send our changes in city code to, to have it codified back into our ordinances, and we pay an annual or monthly quarterly fee for them to have that service done.
Okay. I just never heard of Munich Code before, so I wanted to clarify. My next one is page 63. I am a little confused because of the same invoice numbers for two different things. One is for somebody's name, and the other is for a septic company. So why do we have the same invoice numbers for different things? I can understand if it all go into the same person or the same company, but...
Is that for...
054... 52421 invoice number down towards their escrows.
Okay, what's the name on the escrow?
One is Diane Valerius, and the other is Leschinsky.
$8,000 and $18,000.
One of those was for... The Leschinsky was for a septic system escrow, and I'm imagining, I can look it up here real quick, that was an escrow return for either driveway or landscaping.
But why would they have the same invoice numbers? That's all I'm curious about, not what they're for, but why?
I would have to check. That may be a typo. They shouldn't have the same invoice numbers.
Okay. I guess that's all I have for the bills list. I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. I've got a question. On page 62, there's a section of several legal bills for Eckrick-Lambers. Are any of these related to the dealing with denial of the final plat for Whispering Asman?
No, those aren't. Those were on previous billings.
Oh, they are? Okay. Do you know what they were? How much they were?
The total legal fees were $1,896 for Eckrick-Lambers' services on this matter.
Okay, which is a little better than I could have been, I guess. But how much staff time do we have involved in that?
We have 23 hours of staff time involved in that.
So half a week, basically.
Yeah.
And what... Do we have a rate for you? I assume it's your time mostly?
Yeah, it was all my time, so it's probably around $2,000 for that.
Okay, so... So traced with the final plat of Whispering Asman, cost city taxpayers four grand. Okay. So I just wanted clarification on that. Is there any other discussion to motion on item A? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item E. Now I forgot who called it, so.
Several of us.
All three of us called.
Okay.
I'm going to abstain from item E because I wasn't here for the May 24 meeting.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Other discussion of item E?
Yes, I have a question on page 95. Just under halfway down, it says, "Voss asked Beck knew these signs were illegally taken down," and this pertains to Lever Street sign, "because it was removed by city staff." I'd like to know when and who city staff removed the Lever Street sign.
Your question's to the minutes, though.
And in the next... In the very next sentence, it said, "He asked why this was illegally taken down, and then he noted the sign was knocked down by someone driving into it." So was it taken down by city staff and removed by city staff, or was it knocked down by a car?
I think the... That second sentence, it's incorrect, because I wouldn't have said that. I think I asked why you thought it was legally taken down. So I... That's how that sentence should be changed.
I'd say consult the video.
What's that?
I'd say consult the video.
Could do that.
If there's a question, just watch the video and see if that clarifies it.
Well, I just noticed that, reading through it, and it kind of contradicted itself, so... That's all I have.
Is there a change you want there?
No, I just wanted to point it out that there was a contradiction. And if we need to go back to make a change, we'd have to go back and look at the video to see exactly what you said. So I wouldn't... I couldn't change it if I don't know exactly what was truly said.
We can have it looked at, so... I think I asked why you thought it was legally taken down, because I was responding to your comment about being illegally taken down. So I think that's what I said. The minutes, I'll take minutes reflect it right, so... Would you like to table the minutes? Get that resolved?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes from May 24, 2021 City Council meeting to review for...
Page 95 of the...
Page 95, discussion.
Well, hang on. Page 10 of 13 of the minutes. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item E is tabled. Item G.
Can I ask a question? There's a... Regarding those minutes, there's a missing statement in there of what I said. So could I ask to have that pulled too? So is it too late to add that, or...
Yeah, Jack or staff is going to have to review it anyway. Just let them ask... Let them know what statement to look for, and we can add it, I guess, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item G. Again, I forgot to pull it.
That's me. Hold on. Oh, my question on this, this is about insurance. Does a city get quotes from other companies, or are you just sticking with the same company over and over again?
We have...
That seems like a lot to me.
We have gotten quotes in the past, but we deal through the League of Minnesota Cities because their services extend beyond their insurance coverage. This agent of record is required by statute and by the league before we can participate in their program. It's cheaper than what we paid the previous agent of record, and this company has never raised their rates since 2016 for this fee.
Okay, well, let's stay with them then. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item G of the consent agenda.
The second.
Motion being second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor to the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item H, I pulled this because we still had the blank in our packet.
I sent out, and it's in front of you, what the number is there. We didn't get that until after the packet went out.
So this is replacement for it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's still just an estimate.
Still an estimate. So $1,273,484.96.
That's correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-36, a resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act, as amended tonight.
I'll second.
Motion being second. Discussion.
Okay, I asked for this to be pulled too for the same reason, but I do have a question regarding it, because these funds are less than what was anticipated. Does that affect our budget any, or...
It will not affect our budget. If we... We may go over a little bit. We have other funds that are not levied funds that we will use to make up for any difference in this.
So we're just going to ship some funds around to...
And it would be from our water and sewer funds, which are paid by user fees.
Okay, all right.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item J.
J. This is such a big package. What did I have a question on J about? J, hey, request service road object. I don't know where I put my note. But I did have a question. All right, I'm just going to ignore that one. I'll make a motion to approve item J of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion being second. Any discussion?
Jack, where are they on that? Are they ahead of schedule on the service road right now?
If they're not, they're right on it, Tim.
As I said, they're moving, so...
They're making very good progress.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item L.
I pulled this item to abstain from voting on it.
Okay.
And I pulled it because I am wondering how old this building is, and it... There were two contradictory things. It said it hasn't had air conditioning in it ever, but then it said it was... One was stolen out of it. So I'm kind of curious about that contradiction.
It's not a contradiction. There's two sides to the building. One is the community meeting room that has never been air-conditioned. We're getting more and more requests for use of that and more and more complaints because of the fact that it's very uncomfortable in the summertime. The other portion of the building is office space, the city water lab, the restrooms, and the entryway. There was an air conditioning unit in that sometime prior to 2006. That unit was stolen, and this isn't part of that proposal to air condition that or replace that. It's only for the community center room itself, which is used by the public.
There's two zones to that building. The community room is actually built as a tornado shelter, so it's all spanked, creeped around it. So that's why... Sorry, there's two zones to it because you can't put holes very... Zones to it, because you can't punch holes very easily through that concrete construction.
All right, so my next question, it has to do why. Council member Mundell refrained, is because we have that company up there, are they going to. Be getting benefits out of it, and are they going to help pay for any of it?
No, this proposal does not include that that's a community center room, which is open to the public, and then the city. Rents that out, and they use it for public use.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to approve item L of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Abstain.
And Brian abstains, that motion passes. And we are through our consent agenda, on to new business, the planning commission. Stephanie.
Good evening, so tonight, the first item is the site plan located at one eight seven five zero Ulysses Street Northeast. This is the Panel Gold Baking Company new site, with Classic Construction as the applicant for it. So on behalf of Panel Gold Baking Company, Classic Construction is requesting the site plan review. Of the new twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five square foot commercial building. The building will be used as a distribution center for country birth. A supplier of breads, buns, to restaurant stores, and schools throughout the state of Minnesota. The use is considered warehousing and distribution, which is a permitted use in the light industrial district. Warehousing and distribution is defined as the use engaged. In storage, wholesale, and distribution of products, supplies, and equipment, therefore, again, this type of use. Is considered the warehouse and distribution, and do not need any other permits for it, it is a permitted use. Little bit of a background on company, the products are baked in Saint Cloud, they have a location there. The semi trucks will deliver the products to the East Bethel site during the evening. Delivery trucks are loaded early morning and are off-site making daily deliveries to the customers. The delivery trucks come back to the site after the daily deliveries and will be parked overnight. Again, they are not semi trucks, they're delivery trucks, the smaller ones. There will be upwards to twenty-five delivery trucks stored on site. Generally, the number of employees throughout the business day at any given time could range between zero to twenty-five people. Staff has reviewed the site plan. It's been determined the site plan meets the city code requirements, and staff supports the configuration, the architectural standards, lighting, and landscape. Landscaping of the proposed plan. City engineer comments from May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Are part of your packet. The remaining outstanding items from the city engineer will not change the site plan, however, comments will need to be satisfactorily addressed. Prior to issuance of the building permit. Engineering items included, but are not limited to stormwater calculations. The MPDES construction permit and project specifications, ensuring that they comply with the East Bethel engineering manual. The building will be rock face brick in two coordinating colors with accents matching the existing structure. There will be a block wall to help with screening the loading areas on the southern and northern sides of the building from Highway sixty-five. And the architectural standards do meet the requirements set forth in city code. Have another picture of it as well. And the landscaping plan also meets requirements of the city code. If the plantings and grass are not completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The applicant will be required to establish an escrow to ensure completion no later than eight months after the issuance of the CO. The city engineer will establish the amount required in the landscape escrow. The southern loading area will be accessed off of one eighty-seventh lane, as shown up on the screen, and the northern loading area will be accessed off of Ulysses Street. The turnaround plan for the semi trucks that will make daily deliveries or product, that will then be distributed by a delivery trucks. Again, these are semis that will come in in the middle of the night and unload the bread. To the building, and then early in the morning around five o'clock is when the delivery trucks will load up and go off and do their daily deliveries. As for the parking and lighting plan, the site shows thirty-nine parking stalls, which includes two accessible stalls. This does meet the requirements of the city code. And then also, the circumference of the parking lot includes ten pole lights, and the building will have numerous wall mounted lights as well. So this lighting plan not only provides sufficient lighting for the site, it also creates a very safe area. For this building, and meets the city code when it comes to lighting. By May twenty-fifth of this year, the commission did discuss the site plan. Each commissioner spoke positively about the addition to the community and the design of the building. The commission unanimously supported and recommended approval of the site plan. Therefore, the commission did review again the site plan and makes a recommendation of approval to city council. With the conditions set forth in resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three and the accompanied exhibits. And Mr. Stranlin, who represents Classic Construction, is here to answer any specific questions that you may have of him.
Okay. I'll make a motion for approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three. Approving the site plan review for the construction of a warehouse slash distribution center. Located at one eight seven five zero Ulysses Street Northeast, East Bethel. PIN number thirty-two, thirty-three, twenty-three, twenty-one, dash zero, zero, one, six.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, second discussion.
I have some comments. First, I wanna say, yes, it's a beautiful building, but my second comment is. Stephanie said that they're not semi trucks, but then she said there are semi trucks. So the semi trucks are coming in, but then delivery trucks, like those cube trucks are taking it out, is that correct?
That's correct, so the semi trucks come in and they just deliver the bread products. In the middle of the night, and they leave the site, so they're not stored on the site. The box trucks will be then loaded with their bread products and leave the site and do the deliveries.
Okay, and there's like, all right, so how many semi trucks are gonna be coming in? On a daily basis?
That I do not know, I did not ask the business on how many. Semis that they bring down from Saint Cloud to deliver the bread to that specific building. But I do know that they do have up to twenty-five box trucks that will leave the site every day to deliver the products to the restaurants and stores.
Is that the maximum, twenty-five, or will it be thirty-nine, or sixty-nine?
At this point, that's, yeah, that's the maximum is they will have is twenty-five.
Okay, because I'm not in favor of having all these semi trucks coming here, but the box trucks don't bother me. So I'm kind of curious about how many semi trucks. And my other issue is, East Bethel really isn't central to the state, why is it coming here and not? More, something more central like Stearns or Todd Counties? Because sixty-five is dangerous enough as it is.
Right, well, Stearns County, the, their main area, distribution center and baking area is up in Saint Cloud. And they needed a distribution area closer to this side of the city, rather than leaving the Saint Cloud area and driving down here. To hit the restaurants in this area, so as part of their business plan, this is the area that they felt needed a distribution center.
I know, but we don't, the. The restaurants are in Maple Grove and the cities and. Lane and those kind of places, so. That would even be more central down that way.
Yeah, I don't know, all I know is that the owners felt like this was the area that they needed their distribution center located.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
I just think that the semis will be coming in late at night or early in the morning, they're not gonna be there during the day, I don't think so, right? So there'll be no traffic issues then, so.
No, absolutely not, the semis deliver in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
The distribution trucks are already needed and on the road by five AM.
Yeah, I don't think the semis will be a big deal, so.
On the. On the truck turn exhibit. I, I just wanna make sure, I mean, it looks like there's enough room, but I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna have trucks backing in. They'll have little room to come in front forward and be able to do a T-turn inside the property. Okay. Because we've had a couple businesses lately that it's been a problem with now, so. And then the other question I had is. There's not a lot of residential around, or your apartments are quite a ways away, but truck idling? Are these trucks gonna be parked all night after they load, or they drop in their trailers?
The trailers will never stay there, or the semis, they come from Saint Cloud, and they're anticipating at this time, no more than four a.m. To bring the bread in, and then they'll be delivered with the delivery trucks. So that the tractor trailers will never stay off.
Okay, okay. That's my questions. Anything else, any other discussion?
Actually, I have another question. What are the routes, so they're taking one hundred and eighty-seventh and. But then are they going to Viking and going to sixty-five, or what, what are the routes?
Kurt, Kurt, can you come up front, or should I ask you before, I'm sorry?
Thank you.
If you can state your name and affiliation.
Classic Construction, one eight five four two Ulysses Street.
Thank you.
The delivery routes will go all directions from this site. Some of them back to Saint Francis, to the grocery stores, to the schools. The, the schools are a big customer of theirs. And your, your previous question of why they locate it here is they have another bakery in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. So this is an area that needs distribution. It's not all to one spot, that's why there's twenty-five delivery trucks leaving.
Okay, that makes sense, so when those semis come in and in the middle of the night, I know they're loud, are they gonna? Turn off their engine while they're unloading, or do they stay running? Or do you know how that's going to work, because there are residents who live over in that area?
This truck. Terminal or distribution center, I do not know if they would leave them run, but. There's quite a few other ones that are closer to any residential than this would be.
And there's not any complaints?
I, I don't know that.
Stephanie.
Staff hasn't received any complaints.
Do we have ordinance on truck idling at all?
Good question.
No, it would have to come under the noise ordinance portion of the code, and. The only complaints, we've had a few complaints we, we've had, but it's not necessarily idling, it's backup alarms. Trucks that close their tailgates to make sure there's material dislodged from them, but we've never had anything on idling.
Okay.
Yeah, and that beep, beep, beep when they back up, that could be pretty disruptive, too.
I'd like to point out too, but this is, this is an industrial area, and there's other businesses that utilize tractor trailers. So it would be a use that's very similar to what's in that area, though.
Yeah, but it's, it's middle of the night stuff, people are sleeping.
Yeah, I mean, if this was at the south end of the, of the commercial park there, I'd be a little more concerned, because it'd be right next to the apartment buildings with, with the truck idling, so.
And this is right in the center, so it's probably the best place to have anything like this.
I, I agree, I mean, within that area, so that, that's why I was curious whether we had ordinances on truck idling, so.
So if we get complaints. From noise from those trucks, do we have a plan to resolve that? Whether it require them to put up fence or something? I'm, I'm just concerned about the residents.
On semis, are there, is there an option? To not silence, but there's different backup alarms that you can get that. An on some heavy equipment, instead of making the beep, it makes like a sound or. Something like that, is that an option on semis?
I don't know if it is or not, you know, with the limited amount of trucks that'll come in here with semis, I don't really see that this is gonna be a huge issue. If they were coming in here in larger numbers, it may be, but there's gonna be four to five trucks coming in tonight. There's, there's gonna be enough other associated noise around there that could be even worse or louder. Just even the noise from the road is, is, is an issue with some people.
All right.
I know, but. I'm in a lot of the community forums, and people complain about dog barking in the middle of the night, their dog woke me up, this and that, and so. I'm, I just think we need to have a plan. If we're gonna prove this, that if people start complaining, if the noise is. Bother some, that we have a plan that they have, this company has to adhere to, should there be complaints. If there's no complaints, then we're all good, but if there's complaints, we need to take care of our residents first.
Just kind of on a different note, you know, I, I realize these, this company is coming in there now. But I am one of the businesses that was the first one in there, and we are right next to the residents. And I think the city knew at the time that they approved the apartments, they were moving in next to several trucking firms. So if we put these restrictions on this company, there's many others of us that were there well before apartments. And, and we, we worked during the night, we have trucks coming and going, I'm not trying to.
And there are no complaints so far?
And there's another trucking firm that has many more trucks than this, that they have state jobs, they're coming and going all night. We, we can, I don't see how we can single out a new company that is even further from the residents.
Yeah, I, I agree, but. I didn't approve those other companies, and I didn't, I, I just know there, I know of one resident who. Quietly mentioned that it's a little noisy, but. So I just don't, I'm just concerned about all the residents who live there, that they're not being awoken at night, and I don't know that there is other trucks coming and going at night. But this one is specifically saying they're moving.
Well, I can, I'm telling you, we, we come and go at night, I'm not hiding it.
With semis and loud trucks.
And equipment, and we are right next to that apartment, were you part of approving the apartment? Maybe you weren't part of approving the first businesses, but I'm not sure, were you a part of. Approving the apartment that came many, many, many years after we were there?
All right.
Was that your vote to approve that?
Jack and Stephanie, there, so far, there haven't been any complaints from any residents in this area about any noise from any of this?
No, we, we've had a few complaints in the past, but they've been related to the instance, not idling, but. Numerous backup alarms and shaking tailgates to empty material from beds. So the idling was never one of the concerns. And this was one of the companies, it's in the far southwest corner, and these complaints came from a resident on Jackson Street. Those Jackson Street lots back up against this company, but that's, that's all that we've heard so far.
I don't know if this is the right time, but. I have some concerns of a different matter with the apartment buildings. They apparently don't allow smoking on their premises. So as they sit on the curb, where our trucks are passing right on a curb, they actually sit down on the curb. Several of them at a time, or they come across the street to our yard and smoke, and I, there's somebody that's gonna get ran over there.
Maybe perhaps you can talk with Jack offline on that.
But long as we're talking on that matter, that, that's a dangerous situation.
Anything else, Suzanne?
No, but if other people are complaining about the other companies, then those, maybe we need. No, but if, um, other people are complaining about the other companies, then those, maybe we need, uh, ordinance regarding all the companies and noise at night, but, um, so that, that's all I've got.
Okay, any other discussion? Thanks, Kurt. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item A two.
These, um, property owners are not here tonight either. And just want to give a heads up, I did email all the, my agenda item people to let them know that it was in person and, um, the Particas did answer back and say they would be at this meeting, so I'm not sure why they're not here this.
Okay.
Um, this one is the conditional use permit amendment, or one five four two, two twenty-first Avenue Northeast, for the business known as PVS, and the owners are Vera and Paul Partica. Property is located on the southeast corner of Highway sixty-five and two twenty-first. Little bit of background on this property, so on September of, uh, twenty twelve, the property owner, Paul Partica, submitted a proposal letter for an auto parts storage business that would be open to the public. On May first of twenty thirteen, city council approved the conditional use permit to allow the trucking terminal, terminal from the property with the storage and selling of auto parts to be conducted fully within the building. Um, I did attach the meeting minutes from that meeting to your packet, so you could take a look at it. Um, the conditions that were approved as part of that CUP were that the parking was limited to nine operational trucks and semi-trailers, um, that are part of the VIP transfer PVS Auto. All parking exterior storage shall not be allowed within the required setbacks, public right-of-way, private access easement, or within the required parking area. Um, screening of exterior storage shall be installed and maintained along all property lines. Um, all equipment and materials within the storage area shall be arranged in neat and orderly manner. As part of the approval, the property owner did add metal fencing along the northern property line that abuts two hundred and twenty-first Avenue. So staff has had a few, um, ongoing issues with this site. For the past eight years, PVS has continued to operate, um, although through the last couple of years at least, non-compliance issues have risen, um, and non-compliant letters have been sent to the property owner for the following reasons. The number of semis and trailers exceeded, exceeded the allowed amount of nine. Uh, numerous inoperable unlicensed vehicles were on the site, exterior storage of parts and other items, the lack of screening from neighboring properties and the right-of-way, and the buildings are in need of repair or need to be torn down. The property owner is making progress to bring property into compliance. Most recently, they did meet with city staff, um, and we discussed additional steps needing to bring the property into compliance. They stated they are willing to make an investment into the property by repairing or tearing down non-compliant structures and installing metal fencing around the, um, entire property. So the trucking business has grown and there are additional semis and trailers needed to keep up with the demands of the business. Therefore, the property owner is requesting the conditional use permit amendment to allow up to thirty semis and trailers on-site. As part of the CUPA approval, our property owner is willing to make an investment in the property to clean it up, repair, remove buildings in order to meet code and provide metal fencing around the circumference of the property. The owner stated that the buildings would be repaired or removed. Um, city code does require that all structures that are unsafe, unsafe or a hazard or dangerous to human life need to be either removed or maintained. Um, and so, and code also says that every exterior wall, foundation, and roof of accessory structures shall be watertight, weather-tight, rodent-proof, and shall be kept in a good state of maintenance and repair. Exterior walls shall be maintained free from extensive dilapidation due to cracks, tears, or breaks of deteriorated plastic, stucco, brick, wood, or other material. There are a number of the attached structures on the site that appear to be in violation of this section of city code. Therefore, staff suggests the property owner and staff, um, to include the building official, the city administrator, and the community development director meet on-site to discuss the issues of each building, so the owner can bring them into compliance through repair or demolition. Staff suggests meeting on-site, again with staff, um, in which structures are required to be removed or repaired with a completion, completion date of no later than October first of twenty twenty-one. The exterior storage, our owners did make progress towards removing the inoperable and unlicensed vehicles. Staff does suggest, um, a meeting on-site to ensure complacency with a recommendation that an annual site inspection be completed to ensure this complacency. The screen and fencing, the owner, um, did say they would provide new fencing along the perimeter of the property, um, so you wouldn't be able to see the inside of it from the right-of-way or the adjacent properties. The staff did talk to the owners on that too, and the owner did say that there's about a six-month backorder on the fencing. If you see the fencing they have along two twenty-first, it's that metal, corrugated metal fencing. Um, so staff would recommend the owner be given a completion date for the installation of the metal fencing until June first of twenty twenty-two. Again, that's just because right now it's backordered. Um, so they should be getting it in in the mid, winter months, and then this would give them until the beginning of June to have it installed around the whole property. So with this, um, the owners and staff, again, have been successfully working together on this. Um, staff recommends the following conditions to be part of the conditional use permit approval. If city council, um, does feel, um, that they are going to move forward with an approval, failure to comply with the conditions and dates set forth in the resolution would result in revocation of the CUP. So the first one would be staff would inspect the existing structures to determine which structures would need to be repaired or demolished. Structures must be brought into compliance in later than October first of twenty twenty-one. Failure to meet the deadline would result in the possible revocation of the CUP. Second, the city staff would provide an annual interior site inspection by June first of each year to ensure compliancy with the CUP. Exterior storage is only approved for three, or thirty operable semis and semi-trailers. All other materials would be required to be stored within the buildings. And there would be no, um, unlicensed or inoperable vehicles allowed to be stored on the site. The screening fence must be installed around the entire property. Fence must be the same materials as the new fencing along the northern property line and must be installed no later than June first of twenty twenty-two. Parking spaces for vehicles and semi-trailers must be marked, um, meeting city code requirements. So on May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-one, um, planning commission did hold a public hearing at their meeting. A draft of the meeting minutes is attached to your packet, uh, for you to review what was discussed. There were no public comments, however, staff received two emails the following day from residents that were unable to sign into the Webex meeting. Um, and those two residents, um, stated that they did not want it approved just because of the continued use of the property and how it looks and non-compliance with the existing CUP. The commission recommended denial with the following findings of fact. The current non-compiency of the conditional use permit approved on May first of twenty thirteen, the site is not structured to accommodate the intensified use of the property. Traffic and safety concerns because of the close proximity of the intersection relative to the property with no designated turn lanes or signage. Two twenty-first is primarily used for residential traffic and does not support semi-traffic. And environmental concerns because of the close proximity to wetlands on the eastern side of the site. They have concerns with the site stormwater runoff and untreated pollutants from the semis running into the wetlands. So at this time, the commission did make a recommendation of denial to city council for the conditional use permit amended, supported by the findings of fact set forth in resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four. If city council takes action to approve the conditional use permit amendment, resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, the resolution for approval is attached with recommended conditions, and also city council may add conditions. And again, as I stated in the beginning, um, the property owners are not here this evening.
Uh, just, uh, before we hear, uh, motion, just, a- a- as Stephanie mentioned, there's two resolutions with our packet, one's approving and one's to die, and make sure that we state which one, so. Is there a motion on this matter tonight?
I'd make a motion for resolution twenty one, twenty-one dash thirty-four, denying the CUPA.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Well, first off, to reinforce what the planning commission said, if they haven't met the conditions of the first CUP that was given, why should we extend it? Um, second, if it was going to be a, something with a truck terminal, 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 which isn't allowed in the code for this area, I would rather see it as IUP than a CUP. And there are truck terminal in this area with thirty trucks, I feel is too many. So that's, that's where I stand.
Stephanie, can you briefly discuss the current zoning for this and, and with our new comp plan? And what's allowed and what wouldn't be allowed here?
Yeah, so the property is currently zoned B two, which is highway business.
Central businesses.
Central, central business, which is more of a retail type use, it's a, um, more of like the strip mall type uses, small convenience stores, um, anything retail. But it's not for intense land uses for, say, the trucking terminals or anything light industrial.
And do you recall, uh, I know you weren't here then, but back when PVS was first permitted, which would have been twelve or thirteen, uh, what was the zoning done?
That was also, it was a B two or B three, but it was like a business PUD. Say, I had just, I was, actually, I was started to work on this one and, um, I had left.
That's right.
So, yeah, so it was more of a planned use business district that we had it as. But not for intense uses, again, it was more for retail.
Well, and, and you have it in the packet, the original approval, because I was still on council then, was, was not as a trucking terminal, it was.
No.
Storage, right?
It was for a storage of.
Parts, car parts.
Yeah, and for trailers, the semi-trailers.
The, the trailers are just kind of a part of it, but not the main focus. And I think with thirty trailers, that would be a main focus.
Oh, right, me, even in nine trailers now doesn't fit the current plans for.
Correct.
Development of this, of this area, so. Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I guess, uh, the issue I got, Stephanie, is how can we turn these guys on? We just approved one here on two hundred and twenty-ninth a month and a half ago. It's a trucking terminal up in two hundred and twenty-nine. How can, how can we?
That zone, that's why I asked the zoning question.
Okay.
I mean, there, the Panagol in that area, that's what the zone.
Yeah, because, I mean, we set a precedent, so I don't want to.
Uh, I think the difference being, they've, if you take a look at their shop, it's much straighter, neater, they're all in compliance as far as I can tell from any, uh, zoning issues like that. Uh, the model trucks, uh, is half this or more. And then the zoning is different.
I think Kim was talking about B and T Trucking.
Yeah.
At two twenty-nine, Highway sixty-five.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the only thing I can say with that is B and T Trucking has also been there, I think, since, I can't remember what it was, numerous years. Yeah, as a trucking terminal. Um, and they had approached staff on that, um, and so they actually just came in for, is it a CUP that we gave them?
IUP.
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 Yeah, IUP, so they could just, they could continue their use?
Yeah, well, that, that location was, uh, for many years was a tire recycler location. That lot was absolutely filled.
Ten years, ten years to deal with that.
Yes.
With, with trailers and et cetera, and then they moved to another city. Uh, this, um, employer came in, uh, I think it's been a total turnaround for that location. Um, it impresses me how they keep their property and, but, uh, there's just differences between the two.
Well, I, I think also the fact that, I mean, there's some similarities here, right? They were here and they came in for amendment, well, one on two twenty-ninth has been, they've pretty much kept to their word on, on, on what they would do and they've kept the property up.
Correct.
Um, with this property, we've had history of issues since the start. And, and I think, and they're coming in asking for expansion when they haven't even addressed what they said we would do the first time.
Yeah, uh, I'd still be work, willing to work with, uh, uh, this company, but not as a truck terminal, and they would have to come in compliance.
Chris, i- if, if the CUP, if this application is denied, um, is there a limitation on when they can reapply?
Uh, if the, if the conditions change, they would, they, they could reapply. They might have to wait for a year, I believe, to, to reapply, but, uh, they will be able to reapply at some, at some point.
I believe it is one year.
Yeah, I, I believe they might have to wait a year to reapply, uh, but they will be able to reapply. And there may be an opportunity to address, uh, any, any zoning concerns in the, in the interim, but, uh, they wouldn't be able to make an immediate application for a CUP without addressing the reasons for denial and the findings and waiting the required time period. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, with that being said, um, based on the discussion, uh, I don't know if it would be, um, if, if the council would be interested, but there would be the possibility of adding a, another finding, um, on this matter, stating a, a fifth finding stating that the use of the site as a, a truck terminal or storage site is not a permitted or conditional use in the B two zoning district. Based on the discussion, I don't know if the council's interested in adding a finding or, or not.
The, the, would that have any effect on the fact they already have a CUP? It doesn't nullify that CUP, does it?
It, it wouldn't nullify the CUP, and I, I think the, the council's discussion was that this is a fundamentally, this applicant is asking for a fundamentally different use than what they were granted a CUP for, because that related to outside storage related to the retail, and this is something other than related to the retail.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to amend. You want to restate it again, we'll get it right?
Yeah, uh, resolution, uh, twenty-one thirty-four, uh, to include a fifth finding, use of the site as a truck terminal or storage site is not a permitted or conditional use in the B two zoning district.
Okay, that's my motion to amend, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion on a motion to amend. Hearing none, uh, to the motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? That motion passes, back to original motion now as amended, further discussion?
I, um, wanted to say something on this. I'm really sad that they're not here because I was actually kind of sympathetic to their, um, responses at the planning commission. Um, and I wanted to ask Stephanie, at the planning commission, you invited the lady that was speaking to meet with you the following day. Did that happen and was there any new information that came out from that meeting?
Yes, I have spoke with her on two different occasions since then, and there was nothing new that came out of the meeting.
Okay, um, but I am sad that they're not here because it, the, their, um, responses could have, um, modified my vote. Um, but that being said, they're current, they can currently operate the business that they're running right now, right? The TV, as, or is that going to be abolished with this?
No, that's correct, they could still continue running as they is, what, they are with the nine semis.
Okay, all right, because I'm not for semis up there either. Um, that's a very dangerous turn right there, those semis are there and if I, another, if they're turning in right and the other car barrels around, I could see accidents increasing. So I guess, um, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
And, and with that, if I could, I think the council should be aware, the conditional use permit that they have will remain in effect unless it's revoked by the council.
Yep, we're just acting on, on the amendment to the existing cap. Any further discussion?
So could they bring this back, Stephanie, if they, if they did clean everything up and, and like Chris was saying, if they came back in a year and reapplied? If they followed, you know, everything you guys want here? You know, cleaning it up, put a fence up and?
Yes, they would be able to reapply for a
Okay.
That, that's where I was getting
I mean, that's what I mean, just, just so they know that, I mean, make sure that, you know.
But it's not zoned for that.
But they have a, they have a conditional use permit now.
They have a CUP now, but the CUPA, if they want that, is, is meet these
Right.
things by the city.
That's what led, that's what led to this, right? Was, was, was code enforcement on that, on that property led to them wanting to do the amendment.
Yeah.
So, so the code enforcement actions still are out there, right?
Yes, they are.
And, and Chris, to, to the suggestion that because they have a CUP and the zoning's been changed, that doesn't affect the fact that they have a CUP, is this grandfathered in?
Yeah, yeah, if the zoning has changed, they would be allowed to continue to the extent that the CUP permits them to continue. They cannot expand the use, but they could maintain the current use.
So it's a legal nonconformity?
As a legal nonconformity, there, there may in fact be, and it appears from the code that there is some incongruency between this proposed use as presented in the amendment and the current B2. So if the council wanted to permit this as an either interim use or a, or a CUP, that there might be a code amendment required.
Can I ask a question? What is to the, that building to the south and that uses that road, that dirt road? Because at the planning commission, there was something brought up, and I can't remember exactly what it was, but somebody is using that road and there's a building to the south, and they said that wasn't some accusation, and they said that's not us, that's them using that road down there. Do you know what that is all about?
Yes, and Jack, are you going to try to bring up GIS on that, can you?
Yes, I have it here.
Okay, so what it is, what they've been talking about, it's actually the property owners' access to their property, it's not an easement. So owners of PBS had thought that that was just road easement and the property owner was using it, but that's actually their access to their property. It's curb cut from Anoka County and everything for them to, is their driveway.
And when this intersection was reconstructed for the signalization back in 2012, as you can see, there was a curb cut put in here for usage of this driveway to access this property that's behind them, as they have no access off Highway 65. So this building and this building are served by this driveway.
And what are those buildings for?
We know that there's some storage in there, there's actually no advertised business that's run out of there. The owner's name is listed, it's an LLC, it's AVLT LLC, and what they actually do in there, I'm not sure.
All right, because, well, those buildings look a little dilapidated too, so.
They, they, they are older, but they're not, it is the same shape as some of these are though. There's a couple of these that are probably in danger of falling if we had a good strong storm.
Okay, all right, just curious, because they were saying that they were being accused of something that those people were doing, so.
Yeah, I think what their assertion was, was some of the traffic issues of people pulling out, were people pulling out of this entrance rather than this entrance right here. So I think, to me, that was what I took from what they were, what they were saying, is some of the traffic, and there is minimal traffic that I'm aware of that pulls out of here, was associated with their use of this property.
Okay, okay, thank you, I don't have anything else.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, to the motion as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. On to community development, Stephanie.
Okay, so this is a lot line adjustment located at 2816 and 2842 183rd Avenue. The property owners, Nicholas Kaiser is requesting a lot line adjustment. The lot line adjustment will correct the nonconforming setback of an existing detached accessory structure. You can, can you guys see my cursor on there? No, you can't. So there's a detached accessory structure located on parcel B, and this will reduce the lot size of parcel A and recruit, oh, sorry. Okay, the lot line adjustment will correct the nonconforming setback of an existing detached accessory structure located on parcel B, and then it will also reduce the lot size of parcel A and increase the lot size of parcel B. So exhibit B on your attached resolution shows the proposed lot line adjustment, and here I have it up on the screen as well. All the land that will be combined with parcel B is unbuildable wetland. I also have shown up here the wetland map, and I wish my cursor worked, but it's not showing up there. So all the land that's going to be taken off of parcel A and brought into parcel B, it's all wetland. So it's unbuildable, and the adjustment will not have an effect on the buildable area of the land, so it won't hinder any future development of the land. And I have it written down as the changes include the following, so parcel A, the existing lot size right now is 9.2 acres, the proposed lot size will be 3.1 acres, and parcel B, the existing lot size is 5.2 acres, and the proposed lot size will be 11.2 acres. The $2,000 park dedication fee will not be collected, since a new lot is not being created. So at this time, city council's requesting to consider approval of the lot line adjustment, but the conditions set forth in the resolution. And Mr. Kaiser is here to answer any questions that you may have of them.
Is there a motion on this tonight?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2021-38, approving the lot line adjustment for the properties legally described as pit number 33, oh, excuse me, pit number 34332334-0004 and pin number 34332334-0001.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
I'm really confused.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to guess a few of us are drawing. So if I, maybe I could, I think I caught it at the end, when he talked about the parcel sizes. So is it correct in saying that parcel A1 and parcel B1 were the original?
Yes.
Um, Jack, can you bring it up on GIS? That shows the original right now.
Yeah, hang on, just one more.
Well, I, I just, what threw me was normally, I'm used to seeing when there's amendment to a parcel, it's, it's to the amended parcel, it's the, it's the one or the two thing.
Yes.
So that's, that's confusing.
And I wish my cursor worked on the screen, but for some reason it's not.
Need a laser pointer.
And what would be the parcel B2? On the very bottom.
That's another question.
2816.
So we have, so we have
Three, was there three parcels in there?
There's, there's original parcel
Here, take a look at my screen here.
Oh, look at there.
This is the original, as it shows right now.
Okay.
All we're doing is going like this, boom, boom, so, and this will be one piece, and this is just getting squared off for rectangle now, as you can see it on the right hand side there.
Yep.
So that's what we're doing, we're essentially taking this line and
Moving, moving it over, so why did they mark that as parcel B2, I wonder?
That being a new parcel, because they're making, calling this B, this is the new parcel.
All right, Jack's got it on the screen, so.
Oh, gotcha.
Because right now, this is all a
Oh, zoom out, Jack, okay.
Can you zoom out quite a bit?
Now I understand.
So they were just side by side?
Yep.
Yep, so essentially what they're doing, can Jack can show where the line is where they're, can you use your cursor?
Yeah.
So why is there
This is parcel A and this is parcel B. So essentially what they're doing is they're taking this lot line here, they're taking it and they're just flipping it over to here, so it'll come up into this area. So parcel A will be this area, parcel B will be this, and the back area right here.
Can you zoom out just a little bit, so we see the whole properties? There we go, so there's, there was two rectangular parcels, basically.
So what they're doing is they're taking this lot line right here, and they're moving it over to here.
Making a new Tetris piece.
Yes.
You know, that's probably the best description I've heard all day. So on the drawing, and maybe it doesn't matter, but what's this parcel B1 and parcel B2?
That's just how he has it.
Described.
Described. So the new
The, the new?
Yeah, so the new
On that, okay. Where's parcel A, where's parcel B?
This is parcel A right here.
Okay.
And this is parcel B.
Okay, so this drawing is misrepresenting what it is, huh?
Yes.
Because parcel B on a drawing we're looking at is on the left side.
Correct.
Get that?
So it's copied.
When you look at the drawing?
Yeah, I, I understand.
It should be over on the right parcel, not in the middle of the left parcel, okay.
So what they're doing is they're tweaking this lot line right here as well, because of the accessory structure that's on here. So they're tweaking that a little bit, so it will meet setbacks, and then they'll have the property line right here.
So will there be two homes on one lot, or?
No, it's two separate lots. Each lot has one home on it.
Okay, because it's hard for me to see. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Any other discussion? We just have to get it straight in our heads, that's all. All right, to the motion as made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Street naming, naming 7B.
Consider approval of street name or names for the Trunk Highway 65 East Service Road project. Staff is requesting council direction on the proposed street name or names for the new service road from 187th Avenue to Viking Boulevard. In general, street names in East Bethel are based on the Anoka County grid. In the areas of the frontage road, the grid names are based on the names of cities in the United States. The first quarter mile east of Trunk Highway 65 includes Aberdeen, Baltimore, Chisholm, and Davenport, as shown in exhibit one. And on the grids, this is this is what the street names are aligned to be with. The first quarter mile east of Trunk Highway 65 includes the four streets that I just showed, Aberdeen, Baltimore, Chisholm, and Davenport. Based on the current construction plans, the street would be Davenport Street at the intersection with Viking Boulevard, which is here, and then would change to Baltimore Street, south of the round, the roundabout is shown in exhibit one, I'm sorry, right here. It is anticipated this street would eventually be extended to the south at the intersection of Baltimore Street and Briarwood Lane. The main issue with this alternative is the naming of the streets within future developments that will be adjacent to the frontage road. For example, it is very likely that the interior development streets could align with the Davenport grid line, which is here, which may be part of the elevage project. And this would be a conflict, we already have one conflict with two Davenport streets, one at the Ice Arena and one just to the east of the Ice Arena in the development behind that area. The other alternative would be to add additional street names. Another alternative could include changing the names of streets to the extent practical to match the Anoka County grid. The next exhibit shows what that would be like. So if you start out at 187th Lane, which is here, then this would be Baltimore Street, the stub here would be a future extension south to Briarwood. The line in blue would then be Aberdeen Street, which follows the city grid, and the red line could be Davenport Street. Now, one thing here with Davenport and Chisholm, this road actually falls in between the two grid lines. It could be named either one. The problem with this alternative is this method can be confusing to drivers, since the street names change three times in the same alignment within a relatively short distance. This is particularly true for people who are not familiar with the area. This alternative would also include an additional expense in adding and maintaining additional street signs. The other alternative would be to choose one name for the frontage road that would extend from Briarwood essentially all the way up to 209th Avenue. This name could continue as the frontage road, north and south. The main issue with this alternative is it would not follow the Anoka County grid system. Choosing a name outside the grid would need to be clearly documented to all emergency services. It is recommended that this method is used, then the name should be consistent with the Anoka County grid methodology, choosing the name of the city as the United States is shown in exhibit three, or concurrently, this could be named an entirely new street, which would follow no matter which curvature it deviated from the grid pattern. So in talking with the emergency service people, particularly fire departments, I think they have a preference for having this street named one name. It's particularly confusing when we go and you deviate from the grid and the, the same street changes names maybe three or four times. You know, another good example that everybody's familiar with is if you're on Viking Boulevard and you turn north on Jackson Street, you go about a mile, turns to 189th, and you go make the curve and it turns to Polk Street. So one name would certainly eliminate that, we do have certain city streets that do have one name through their entire length. One good example is East Bethel Boulevard, it varies from the, the grid pattern. So staff is recommending that alternative three, one name for the street be considered for approval, is requesting direction for a proposed street name for the new Trunk Highway 65 Service Road.
Well, my first comment is, is you try naming streets on the east coast when nothing is on a grid pattern, so, then try to find things, so. I, I, I agree with not having multiple names, that, that, that doesn't seem, make any sense.
I agree too, East Bethel Boulevard turns into Luam and 221st, and something else in between there.
Well, and, but, but then from 221st North, it deviates from the grid pattern, but still is East Bethel Boulevard.
Yeah, could we just call it Frontage Road? I mean
That's what it is now, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we want it something different. I mean, the, the frontage road in front of like Route 65 and over there, that's actually Central Avenue. That's the old name for the, what was Highway 65. And then this, it's not shown here, do you have something that shows where the road alignment would probably go to the south, to Briarwood? Because it could, it's not straight, it continues this winding path.
And actually, we're not exactly certain exactly how that is, we, we had
Right, but it might, might
Yeah.
If you're just east of the creek or
Where the cursor is, is where that roundabout was shown on the previous photograph. So we had originally, it originally showed that this service road would continue and parallel the county ditch line to here. So we had originally, it originally showed that this service road would continue and parallel the county ditch line to here, in which case it would be Davenport about here, but then it would change either to Baltimore or Aberdeen. This is Baltimore Street right here. So it would probably be Baltimore Street and a portion of it would be Davenport, maybe this section right here. But this service road actually may come on and it may come down the center of this. So we're not exactly certain where the final alignment is. It's going to depend upon the developer and how they break this parcel up into what uses. You know, if this is essentially commercial and they may use this frontage and this right here, there's a separation to transition maybe into residential development on the east side of the property. So, uh, the other thing, if we go north from Viking Boulevard, um, here's where the street would come out now, this where the construction is. This could go straight through and this would follow the Davenport line up to Klondike, and it could even go north of Klondike. Uh, when we get right here, Davenport would hit almost at the end of two hundred and ninth, which is the cul-de-sac. Currently, this is Davenport right here entering, I mean, this is two hundred and fifth, two hundred and ninth. Also, the only problem is this little street right here is named Davenport and this street is named Davenport. And.
Well, I guess just we don't need this Davenport.
We, we, we've got an abundance of Davinports, you know. Uh, you know, if we were looking for a name, a general name, you know, I think it should be something simple, but some, you know, I've ha- heard proposals. Enterprise Drive, East Bethel Parkway, Commerce Road, Venture Drive. It just depends on what, what we had a preference for, for a name.
East Bethel Drive? Well, first, first let's decide if that's what we want to have, have a, a, a unique name for the whole road. Uh, I think it should, just.
I think it should just be one name.
To avoid the confusion and then, and, and then, and not be one of the grid names, because it's going to confuse somebody. I mean, we can't call it all Chisholm because we know there's going to be a Chisholm street inside the development, you know, so it doesn't make sense either, so. But then it's coming up with the name, so.
I kind of like the East Bethel Parkway.
We already have East Bethel Boulevard. I don't know.
And the, the reason that this is brought up now is because Mindot is pressing us to give a name so they can go ahead with the finalization of some of their stuff. If we can't come to some resolution of this tonight, we can bring it up again at the next meeting. I'd even, I, I'd hope maybe that we, it could have been put off to a work meeting in July to where we have a little bit better discussion of it, but this is a semi time since it mattered to Mindot.
Well, how do we want to approach it? I think, I think we can come back with ideas. I don't think we're going to come up.
No.
Put it this way, I don't want to come up with a name tonight. It's, I think it's too quick, you know? It'd be nice to hear some suggestions, I don't know. You know, it's, you want something that identifies it, you want something that's unique. And I would think to the businesses that want to be on that road, they want something that not corny, I don't know if I'm sure what I'm saying here. Something that kind of fits in development wise, so, not a bizarre name, not a hard name.
Coon Lake Drive.
No teepee canoe streets, so.
We, we already have a Coon Lake Boulevard.
So how do you want?
Oddly enough, we do not have, even though it's on the grid, we do not have a Chisholm street in our system.
But.
I, I, I'm just, that, that, that's just a, a little bit of trivia.
It could be in the development plan. I'd make a motion to table this.
Well, I think we should, but I think we need to have a plan too. It's too bad Craig isn't here because I'm sure he's run into this in other cities.
Yes, uh, I had a con- Craig had to be out of town today. This, this was his item, so I'm kind of pinch hitting for him and, uh, I'll make sure he hears about it.
Okay. And do we just want to think about names and just bounce a bunch off? When are we meeting again? In two weeks?
July, uh, June twenty-eighth, two weeks from tonight.
And when do we need this decided by?
If we can get something done at that meeting, I think that'll be.
When?
If we can get something done at the twenty-eighth meeting, then I think we'll be okay.
Okay. So I'll, I'll suggest that maybe each of us just send Jack some suggested names. And if there's any, anyone else out there that's got some ideas, just send them to Jack and then we'll have a a list of names at the next meeting and, and just look at that, so. Does that sound like a plan?
Send out an email to the commissions for their feedback, save. Not, uh, not as a meeting item, but if they want to pitch a name as well, any of the commissions.
We could. There's, there's two weeks, you come up with something, so.
And we can out, we, we can add this to the EDA agenda too, if they want to discuss it.
What, what I don't think we want to do is, no offense to anyone, but send it out to the public. I think we'll get five hundred different ideas, but. They're hearing it anyway, so if you want, have any ideas for this road, send it to Jack.
With naming stuff that reminds me that, uh, over in Ireland and the UK, they named Snowplows. And you could watch their routes and it was up to the public. So Mindot recently did that too. I think the top name that was picked was Plowey McPlowface.
Snowball. I've, I've heard some of those. I mean, this is kind of like.
I, I like Plowey McPlowface, but.
I think like in Blain, there's Paul Parkway that cuts across the city and, 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 and that curves all over. There's no way you're going to change names, so.
Yeah, and, and I think it's the general consensus with staff and from what I've heard from council and especially from emergency services, that it would be best to stick with one name for the whole route, which would actually go from Briarwood eventually all the way up to probably Sims Road.
Well, if, if it gets above Viking, it's.
It's a straight shot.
Probably a straight shot, so I mean, so that, that's a logical change, to, to change the name if you want to, but that's for a council thirty years from now to decide, so. Okay, so let's send Jack some suggestions and we'll bring it back at next council meeting. How's that for controversy? In our public works.
Do we need the board on tabling it?
Do we sit? Yeah, I guess we would. Wa- was it seconded?
It was not seconded. I'll second on tabling it.
Uh, second on table till the next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Thanks, Brian.
Good luck with your emails, Jack.
Thank you.
Nate.
Meeting of Mayor and Council members. Item seven point oh is the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six Roads Capital Improvement Plan. We're asking for your consideration for approval of the, uh, plan that we presented. City staff prepares an annual capital improvement plan, which updates projected projects, evaluates priorities, and establishes fundings for these works for the coming year and for each year of the subsequent years over a five-year period. Plan is presented to the city council for their approval and used for preparing the coming year's budget. Approval of the plan only commits the city to the projects listed for twenty twenty-two. Exhibited as attachment one is the draft twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six Roads CIP as proposed by the city staff. The starting balances for the twenty twenty-two reflect anticipated costs for all the twenty twenty-one road construction projects, including the reconditioning of Durant Street, the service road project from one hundred and eighty-sixth Avenue to Viking Boulevard, and the North Metro Joint Powers Maintenance Projects. The proposed plan requires a general fund transfer of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into the street capital fund for twenty twenty-two, which is consistent with the current funding, but an increase in twenty twenty-three to five hundred thousand dollars is proposed to help cover material price increases. A negative balance in municipal state aid MSA account is not indication of, is not an indication of too many projects, but the need for numerous projects that can be funded within the regulations established by Mindot. The city can advance fund for projects not to exceed the limit up to four times the annual construction allotment, or three million dollars, whichever is less. Our current projected annual allotment in the state of Minnesota is six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. So attachment one is the street capital fund. This fund is, is, uh, funded through general fund transfers to the street capital fund. Oh, sorry, no, the first one is twenty. You got, go back to the first one, did you, Jack? There's an MSA fund on there. This one is funded through the state of Minnesota from our, uh, annual allotment of six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. And that amount changes from year to year based on, uh, different things the state uses to calculate the amount, but we've kind of been around that amount for the past few years. We show, uh, zero balance for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three because we're advanced funding out of that, uh, fund right now to pay for the service road. We anticipate a starting balance, even after those advanced funds, around seven hundred thousand dollars, but that, it's going to vary depending on the cost of the service road project. So for next year, we have one hundred and eighty-first avenue reconstruction project planned with the city of Ham Lake. We have a estimate of, uh, four hundred and twenty thousand. That would be our half of the project, so the total credit cost would be around eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for that project. Craig is currently working on that. We originally had a plan for this year. There was a, uh, issue with some right-of-way on the Ham Lake side, and Craig is the lead engineer in the project, so he's dealing with that. And we're going to try and bid it this fall to get better pricing. When we bid projects in the summer, in the past, we've had high prices like the Durant Street project. And this would be for a, uh, right-of-way project kickoff spring of twenty twenty-two.
Ham Lake, don't have any issue with it pushing it back?
Nope, they're on board with it.
Okay.
From all versions.
Okay.
And, and that additional right-of-way is the ad, did it add cost to the project or?
Jack, do you, you're familiar? I don't think, it wasn't very much. It was just more of a.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I think most of that right-of-way is Ham Lake's responsibility.
Ham Lake's responsible for securing it on their side, but Craig is handling the, the recording of everything for it.
So it's not a cost we're splitting with them?
Not in that part at all. For twenty twenty-three, uh, we have the University Avenue reconstruction. This is the portion of University Avenue from Sims Road north to two hundred and twenty-first. This was a high priority in our plan a few years ago. Well, actually put a few years ago until they upgraded the signal at two hundred and twenty-first, because a lot of people would use it as a cut-through to get to Sims to get to the highway. So this one's been on our budget, on our plan for a while. And it's, uh, it's in need of, of, uh, repair. That, there again, it's a shared project at Oak Grove. It's a border street. Um, we've had discussions with Oak Grove and they're still on pace for that timing. For twenty twenty-four, we have the Davenport reconstruction. This is another project that we've been on, uh, had on the books for quite some time. This is the Davenport Street or whatever we could be called at some point in the future, but this is north of, uh, two hundred and ninth, going up towards the post office. Um, it's an old road. It doesn't meet our city with standards and the asphalt's in really bad shape. So we'd ex- we'd expand that with curb and gutter to the full width to match all the other existing roads on there. And then we do not have anything planned for twenty-five and twenty-six. We're kind of looking at that as a chance to catch up on our funding. If something does come up, we can advance fund further down the plan, but, uh, right now, we don't have anything in those slots. If another service road project comes up or, uh, something like that, we could move some stuff around.
So Nate, you talked about the University Avenue reconstruction and the Davenport Street reconstruction, both as being high needs and we identified high needs years ago and I, I, Davenport's been in high need for a long time. Is there any reason not to, or can we push those up, or do we need to spread these out?
Well, we, when we look at our ending balances, we might be able to move Davenport Street up into twenty twenty-three. It's going to depend on if the state of Minnesota is going to, right now, they have kind of a freeze on advanced funding. We had to go through some, get some special treatment for advanced funding. I think it'll free, it'll be back to normal pretty soon, but.
So we don't need advanced funding for next year, is what you're saying?
No, we already have advanced funding, or our funding in there that we've already been approved for with this service road project. And, and, and if we didn't, if we needed to use that money for the service road, we've looked at an option of using our street capital fund to pay for it, and then we can make that hole again later on with the MSA fund.
E- each year, the advanced funding requests are done annually, so, uh, the state's out of funds for this year. Uh, we've gotten advanced funding in the amount of approved for one point nine million dollars, which will go toward the service road. We may not need all that. If we don't need it, then the rest will go back into our account.
Okay. All right.
So that's the street state aid fund on page one seventy-five of your packet. The next page is our street capital fund. This fund shows the, uh, initial balance of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars that we'll be carrying over after the completion of our projects this year. Um, it's an estimate. We're showing a general fund transfer of four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, the three projects in green there are assessments from, that we get, uh, payments from that'll go into the revenue side of things for that fund. The first lined item in the cost is the North Metro JPA projects. These are chip seals, our crack ceiling, our street marketing projects. We usually budget around two hundred thousand dollars for that. We also have, uh, two overlays for a neighborhood, uh, Shenandoah Ridge and Shawnee Woods. They're included as attachment two in your packet, um, maps showing those locations. And also Pine Grove Estates Development, an overlay for that development as well. And then a larger project is the one hundred and eighty-third Avenue reclaim and pave. Um, this is, that, that one could be a little bit more expensive than what we're showing on there. It's pending on the soil on that one.
Does that go from sixty-eight all the way down to Laketham?
Highway sixty, yep, Conner Road sixty-eight to, uh, till it turns into Everglade Drive.
Okay.
That, that stretch doesn't need any culvert upgrades or anything like that longer?
Uh, that's included in this. It's probably going to need, uh, like a geo-grid type thing like we did, like we did on Durant Street. Craig and I are going to have to sit down and go through some different designs for that, so. And all these projects that are planned on here, they will come back for the city council before they're approved next year. So this is just a plan to outline. Basically for this, all we're, all we're proving is the transfer, the transfer fund amount. Each project will come back before the council for approval for, uh, engineering and getting approval after that too, so. A lot more detail will come as these show up. For twenty twenty-three, same thing, uh, JPA projects on overlay in Northern Oaks and Cooper Lake Estates, which is the John Anderson Development. And Pine Oak Crossing. Uh, twenty twenty-four, we have Sunset Drive reclaim and pave with the city of Lynnwood. That one is initial discussions with Lynnwood. They have a quite a bit smaller budget than you do, so they're interested in it, but we have to do a little bit more planning on that one. We want to get it in a space here, so we have it earmarked, I guess. Twenty twenty-five, we have the Anderson Lakes Overlay, which is the development off of, uh, Wild Rice Drive by Anderson Lake Park. And then in twenty twenty-six, we have just a general overlay project that we haven't filled in yet. It could be filled in in coming years. So we show a positive balance throughout that whole plan, um, with the five hundred thousand dollar transfer beginning in twenty twenty-three and continuing on through twenty twenty-six.
And one, one, one thing, we always maintain a positive balance in the street capital funds. And, uh, we've done a good job here of laying this out, so we do have some balances left in there in case some other project comes up or we have to use some of the street capital to supplement our MSA funds. Uh, as Nate said previously, though, if we did that, then when those MSA funds will come back to us and we can transfer them here to make the street capital hole. Again, the street capital is funded by transfers from city council, comes out of our budget. The MSA funds are allocations from Mindot State of Minnesota. So these are the two major funding sources we have for improving city streets. We've been increasing a little bit the amount of transfer back into the street capital to make sure we don't fall behind in some of these projects. And, uh, doing a, we're staying ahead of them, uh, or at least, uh, trying to stay ahead of them and address those, so we don't get too far behind, because once you get far behind in these street projects, it's very expensive to catch up in them.
And to Jack's point, the MSA fund, uh, money can only be used on MSA roads. We can't use those for neighborhood streets and things like that. They're only major connector roads and, and, uh, higher volume woods typically.
So I'm understanding that prices for all this materials is increasing substantially, just like construction material is going up. Does that mean that we will get? Does that mean that we will get increased revenues from state and other sources, or probably not?
Well, it, it, it all depends. The MSA funds are based on a lot of factors, the amount of gas tax taken in, the amount of new streets that we add each year as part of the formula. Couple of years ago, I think we got a little over $700,000 in our MSA allotment. It kind of fluctuates, is hopefully as long as we're within 10% of the way, we're going to be in pretty good shape. But some of that probably will be driven by inflationary costs. The good thing about it is those costs haven't been going up like material costs for building construction. They have risen quite a bit, as we noticed in our last bid on the service road. However, that one was due to as much of the fact that the cost for certain materials, like clean sand, have gone up drastically because it's hard to find. And the fact that there was some consideration of the bidding contractors of the soil conditions there, so.
Okay. I, I actually have another question that's semi-related. We were supposed, when we got rid of the Roads Committee, Commission, we were supposed to develop a Roads Committee. And as far as I know, we haven't done that. And I'm just wondering, what is the status of that?
We do have a Roads Committee, and on the Roads Committee are the mayor and Mr. Harrington, but we haven't had the need for a meeting. You know, this is something, you know, we probably could have presented this CIP to the Roads Committee, but I think it generally just comes before council and we go over it. Again, that's one of the reasons that we disbanded the Roads Commission is because most of these things are time-sensitive, and they come straight to council anyway.
Okay. I just thought we had to, we had to come report council, and we voted on it. And I don't remember that happening, not to say it didn't. All right, that's all I have. But thanks, this is good information.
I got a question for you, a question for Nate. I know this is one you don't want to hear, but where's, is Klondike ever going to fit in this MSA somewhere down the line? I mean, I've been getting calls about the dust lately, you know, the people that are living on that road. I mean, I know we can't do the whole road. Is it, you know, maybe break it up into a couple of sections, or?
I mean, that's an option the city could look at. The last time, I think, our engineer did an estimate was over $2 million to do that.
The whole road?
To do the whole road.
Okay.
We, this year has been exceptionally dry. We have plants on all our gravel roads from dust. We are doing a fluoride application on the end of this month on Klondike.
I mean, I got to bring it up because, like I said, I've had some emails and some phone calls, so.
It's a, it's, ever since I started here, and probably since Jack was here, and everybody's probably on this council, it's an ongoing issue, and how to, how to fund that is something that the Road Committee could look at.
Tell me when I go to Beaverbrook every Tuesday how bad I get it. I get chewed pretty heavy over there, so.
I, I might add, too, that that engineer's estimate was done over 10 years ago, too, so it's not too current.
Well, like I said, I like your idea of maybe asking them for extra money for an extra chloride shot. You know, see if you can split it up between the three big businesses there. Now, what is it, $5,000?
It was about $6,000 with increased prices.
If they want to, you know, keep the dust down to another chloride thing or something.
We typically get about a month and a half out of, out of an application, so. The reason we've always waited till later in June is typically June, we get enough rainfall where it stays somewhat reasonable and gets us through the dry periods of July and in August. But this year, it's, we're in drought condition, so.
Brian Mundl sent us an article on some other materials that can be used for dust control. We're, we're looking into, based on what I've read, there's advantages and disadvantages. It's, so, so far, it appears there's places where they can be used effectively. One, one of the items, and I, I even forget the materials now, but they were.
It's, one is, comes from sap, essentially a byproduct of tree production. And one is a byproduct of soybean production.
Yeah, that's.
I forget the technical terms for them, but I, I think the, Jack did find a, a report that was done down in Iowa determining which products work the best, and it was the tree sap that was better. And, but it was kind of hit or miss depending on, I mean, it, it got into some detail, but not exactly, you could really get down into in-depth on testing these products on which road, which soil, soil conditions, moisture conditions, so many other factors that. But there are more options out there rather than just chloride, putting chloride down.
Okay. I've had discussion before we have a motion, but is there a motion on the CIP?
I'll make a motion for approval of the 2022 through 2026 MSA and street capital fund projects as identified in attachment one.
Okay.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. On to the city minister here, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7G1, city assessor contract. The current city assessor's contract expires on December 31st, 2021. The city sent notices for request for proposals for this service to Ken Tolsmann, Mary Wells, and the Anoka County Assessor's Office. City received proposals from Mr. Tolsmann and the Anoka County. Ms. Wells expressed interest in submitting a proposal but chose not to submit for this contract term. Proposals are attached for year review and discussion. Contract terms for this service are proposed for three years. Mr. Tolsmann's been the city assessor since 2002. Prior to Mr. Tolsmann's term as an independent contractor for this service, Anoka County performed assessing services for the city. Mr. Tolsmann provided the city an updated cost proposal for another three-year contract term that would run through December 31st, 2024. Mr. Tolsmann's proposal reflects a 0% change in rates for each of the property classifications that he reviews. The Anoka County Property Records and Taxation Division provide the city a cost proposal for a term that would run through December 31st, 2024. Their proposal reflects a reduction from their rates quoted in their 2018 proposal, but exceeded Mr. Tolsmann's by charges ranging from 4% to 13% for three of the property categories. Charges for the assessment services were required, were compared by property type and rates per classification and are exhibited in the table one in your packet. For the year 2023 assessment year, the costs to the city per parcel are quoted as follows. There's a breakdown here for four categories. Improved residential, seasonal, recreational, residential, and agriculture, with Mr. Tolsmann's proposal at $10 per parcel, Anoka County's for $1040. Unimproved residential, seasonal, recreational, residential, and agriculture, with Mr. Tolsmann's proposal at $250 per parcel, and Anoka County's at $460. Improved and unimproved commercial, industrial, and public utility, Mr. Tolsmann's proposal was $55 per parcel, Anoka County's was $62 per parcel. Improved and unimproved apartment and manufactured home park, Mr. Tolsmann's proposal was $55 per parcel, Anoka County's was $62 per parcel. Based on the parcel counts from table one, Mr. Tolsmann's proposal would cost the city $59,635 for 2022, and the Anoka County's proposal would cost $64,839, assuming there is no change in the number of parcels. If there were changes in the number of parcels, though, these costs would increase proportionally, and there wouldn't be any narrowing of the gaps. Mr. Tolsmann's proposal would have no increase in the parcel rate over the term of the contract, while Anoka County's proposal contains an ex, escalation clause, based on their cost of operation, and any cost of living and merit adjustment is established by the Anoka County Board of Commissioners. In your packet two, with the proposals, the qualifications of both parties and descriptions were presented in attachments one and two. Based on the review of this, staff recommends council consider the award of the assessor service contract to Kenneth A. Tolsmann, SAMA, with a term to run from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024.
Is there a motion on this tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the award of the assessor service contract to Kenneth A. Tolsmann, SAMA, with a term to run from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto the new item two, G2.
Item G2 is the amendment to the agenda tonight to reconsider the vote of May 24th, 2021 regarding the Lever Street issue and the approval of signage for the intersections leading to this private easement and to send a resolution to Google requesting redirection of routes to. The three residents on the private easement, these addresses being 19335, 19315, 19265 Lever Streets.
And I'd like to make a motion to rescind my vote for the Lever Street signage from the May 24th meeting, due to council member Harrington not being present and the outcome of the residents not being happy with the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second, discussion.
The thing, the thing with the Lever Street situation is all they're, all they're asking for is one street sign and to be left alone. That's it. One street sign that was there long, long before. And they have it in their, their legal descriptions on their properties that they maintain the road, they do any tree cutting, they do any plowing, they do any, anything. Lever Street is their only legal access to their properties. And I just, I hadn't, after, after doing more thinking, and I'd really like to just make a motion to put Lever Street sign back up to where it's at, or where it used to be, at East Front and Lever Street, and let the residents be.
We have one, you have one motion out already.
Okay.
Sounds like you're making another motion, separate motion. I, I'd suggest we deal with probably the first motion first, your motion to rescind your vote.
Oh, gotcha.
So why, I mean, from what you said, it, it's pretty much what was discussed at last meeting about how you'd like to see this go. But why are, why are you rescinding your vote, though? Something you voted for?
Because the conversation was going absolutely nowhere. It was two to two. Mr. Harrington was not present. And I have received numerous phone calls, emails from the residents not happy with, with the outcome.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, on a, on a point of clarification for the council. Well, the motion's been phrased as to rescind council member Beck's vote. This would be to rescind what was adopted. So it wouldn't just be changing council member Beck's vote. This would un-adopt if this were rescinded what was adopted on the previous.
Okay.
On the previous meeting where this was addressed.
So do you suggest that we have this motion amended?
We could, we could clarify it if everyone's acceptable with the clarification. I just want to be clear, this isn't about changing one council member's vote. This is.
It's the entire.
The, with the item that was passed, and I just want to be clear on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, aye. Brian, you, you're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, I heard at the same time, so that motion fails. You were trying to make, talking about making another motion. Sounds like it was the same motion you had last time.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion just to put the Lever Street sign back up where it used to be on East Front Boulevard and Lever Street until Google Maps can be rerouted for emergency vehicles. Any, well, for anybody. And, and for the residents just to, just to leave it, leave it be, be in peace.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Chris Plin, order. Can we deal with the same motions two meetings in a row?
Well, at presently, the city is directed to, or it's the position of the city that is going to put those three signs up.
Right.
So that's, that's still the, the position of the city. This would almost be in addition to that, putting another sign at the northern end of Lever Street in addition to those signs.
I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, and I'm not sure if they're exactly, but the, the motion that failed at last council meeting appears to be the same motion that Shelley's making right now. So my question is.
But not all of us are present.
Just a general question. Can we keep bringing back the same motion every meeting? Is there a time limit, or?
No, there's, there's not a time limit. I, I would note that this, enacting, and this isn't, isn't on the agenda or anything like that. But there, there wouldn't be a time limit, and this would be in addition to what was, what was posed.
And the reason I'm bringing it back is because Mr. Harrington was not present at the last meeting. And I know he was out at the residence and spoke with the residents and was in favor of having the sign put back up for them.
Okay, so there's motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Well, I want to say a couple of things, because I've been in contact with the county, and they've sent me multiple documents of various deeds that have gone through, through the years. And it, they all make that public, a deed for a public road. That's what the documents say. Some say 30 feet, some say 33 feet, but either way, they have all kinds of records. One of the documents say it is not up to the city. The city has no right to return that easement. The road. The documents, even the city attorney in the minutes last time said that the doc, the deeds say it's for a public road in some of the sentences. So it's, it's already deeded as a public road. So I don't understand why it can't have the name there. That's what they use for their mailing address. That is the main street. It's not, their mailing address is not Isetta Street. Those other three signs, they don't make any sense. It's a waste of money to even have those signs put up there, but that's obviously a done deal. It is an actual street. Somebody here said it was not an actual street at the last meeting. It is an actual street, and it's, is listed as a public road, and.
Where is it listed as a public road?
In all the deeds. It's listed as it was deeded as a public road. And the city attorney stated that, and it's in the minutes.
For instance, Ms. Wilkins, when she had to get a loan for her home, they would not, they would not give her, the bank wouldn't grant her a loan without an address, a legal address.
It was deeded as a public road to the city and recorded as such, but the city did not accept that as a street, so it is not a city street.
A public road, a street, it's, it's still a public road.
There's a difference, there's a legal difference, yes.
And if I, if I could clarify my comments, if, if they need be from the, the previous meeting, there, there is no Lever Street, despite what the underlay is on the map. It's a, in effect. a, in effect, private easements, the over the top two lots here, Lot A and Lot B. The city could at some point, if it wanted to, create a public road because it has right-of-way over those, those two northern lots. If the city were going to do that, it would likely need to acquire more right-of-way because they only have 30 feet of right-of-way. So it would be substandard to make a city street. But the issue with lots C and D is they also have, in addition to this public easement, a private easement that's recorded in the deeds, a right of access over lots A, B, and C to get to Lot D. And I believe Lot D is, is Ms. Wilkins' lot. And she does have a, a private right of entrance over all of those lots, but it's not a public road.
So with that being said, that is not an actual road, it's access. These residents treat it as their road, their access, which is their, what their easements have. Jack, is there any rule that states that they cannot, that they can't put their own sign up that states Lever Street? Because if they are using it as their private road, can they put their own sign up for that reason?
I think they can on their private easement portion. On the public easement, that would be a legal question that would have to be answered.
Cause the.
Well, the private driveway signs are, did we put those up?
Yes.
The city put those up?
Yeah.
The post is still there for the Lever Street sign.
We're talking at the cul-de-sac, the private drive signs at cul-de-sac.
Well, even at.
Yeah, but on East Front up there, there's still a pole.
Even at East Front, if these residents are using it as their road, can they put a Lever Street sign there?
If, I would say they could and I'll defer to Chris for his opinion on this. If the city council okayed them to put the sign up there, but I think it would take the city council action to make sure that was designated as Lever Street since it hasn't been accepted in the city system.
Two separate things. Because as a legal aspect, it is not a road. The city cannot name it as a road or to defer to it as a road. But if these residents are using it as their own private drive, their access, could they put their own sign up calling it Lever Street?
It would be on city recorded property and they would have to have, I believe, permission from city council to put up a street sign there. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, Chris.
No, Jack, I don't think it'd be wrong. I think we, there's also be a public right-of-way off of East Front and, and in order to erect anything within public right-of-way, it would require permission.
And again, Brian, I, I don't know why we would do that.
Well.
Or you're just making a point that they could put up signs.
That's what I'm trying to clear. The city cannot put up a sign because it is not a city road. The city has not enacted it as a city road. But if the residents want to use it as their private drive.
Which is in their documents, their deeds.
Then could they put up their own sign there? That'd be, there'd be a difference between the city putting a sign up there and for the residents to use it as a private drive. Can they put their own sign there? Cause if they can put their own sign there, then go, go ahead and do it.
From what Shelley said, the three residents don't want the sign at all. So I guess enough following why.
The sign at East Front Boulevard.
They want the sign at East Front and.
That's it.
The dirt lever. That's it.
And, and so, so they want traffic, they want deliveries.
Because technically the cul-de-sac, from what I am understanding and what I've been told, is an illegal access to their properties due to Mr. Lee asking the developer when they put the cul-de-sac in to open it up. It was not in the original development.
The cul-de-sac, oh yeah. The cul-de-sac was always there. In fact, we, we had discussions of, of turning the road to the south so it would go in front of those three residents.
Well.
And, and at the time, the, the three residents didn't want to, they would have had to participate in the cost for that and they didn't want to. So that's why that wasn't.
Well, they already participated in the cost of paving all of that.
Yeah, after that, after that, they paved the driveway. I mean, it's not a road, it's a driveway. It's 12 feet wide, so.
But like I'm saying, all the residents are asking is for one sign and to be left alone.
I'm just addressing the, the comment that you've made repeatedly, that the cul-de-sac was illegally constructed and.
No, no, no.
You've said?
Not, not the cul-de-sac.
The access.
The access off the cul-de-sac.
That piece that the, that the cursor's on right now?
Yes.
That is city property. That is not illegal. It's city property.
Then I was misinformed.
I've heard call it, that it was illegal and that's where I've tried in the past to say, let's make it a legal one.
But it's not illegal.
So if it's not illegal, then why would anybody think it, it is illegal?
I know there's a lot of things have been said on this issue.
I, I'm just, cause it, it would make sense that if it's illegal access to this private, to this easement or to this private road, then to have a sign there. But.
Do you know, and depending on where you are at, north or south of the properties, Google Maps, which is not the only mapping app out there, will still take you down 190, whatever it is, to, to East Front Boulevard. It does not automatically take you through Katie's Way.
It, it doesn't, but if, I don't know what's wrong. If, if you were to do a, a GPS route from Katie's Way, from one of those homes, it doesn't take you all the way out to 22 and loop you around. It takes you straight to their homes.
I disagree. It depends on what app you're using and what.
Well, I could show you. I did it last meeting. I even showed it on screen.
Right, but every single resident, including myself and other people, have pulled up their addresses on Google Maps.
We know it's wrong. We know it's wrong. We're trying to change it.
Until, until it can get changed, what is wrong with one sign going back where it used to be years ago and all of this will go away?
No, it wouldn't, cause that's not a street. You can't, you can hardly get a pickup truck through there without scraping your truck, without scraping your vehicle, right? You know, you've been down that road.
I've been down that road.
You've been down the road a lot. I know you have.
Not a lot, but I've been down it.
Steve, I guess I got a, I got a question on that street. They, this would be for Jack and me. They used to plow it, so it had to be something.
Ooh.
The guys from, they used to work for the.
Brad used to go.
They used to plow it.
Yes.
It was a fight between council and maintenance department.
Okay, but they, two, two guys in the retard, so they did plow that road at one time.
Yeah, but, but Jerry Lee pretty much took care of the plowing for all those years. So he's the one of residents.
That's why I was wondering. I mean, why, why wouldn't it be a street if they're plowing it?
No, there, I remember fights, and this was, I was on planning, I remember the fights at council over this road.
They actually have a private maintenance agreement where Lot, Lot C, D, and E are responsible for maintaining the north.
And they're, and they're totally fine.
He said they plowed from Lever and East Front all the way down to the houses and then turn around and go back out. That's before the cul-de-sac was put in.
And the residents have absolutely.
Before the cul-de-sac.
As before.
Yeah, before the cul-de-sac was put in.
But the residents have absolutely no problem maintaining that road.
Okay. No, cause at one time they used to.
Right, but the reason it hasn't been maintained lately is because every time one of the residents would go out there, they would be harassed.
That's.
That unfortunately is a civil.
And that is true because I was out there with.
Well, that's, that is unfortunately a civil issue and not something that city council can.
Correct, but I'm just saying that is why it is, has not been continually used and the tree fell and things had overgrown is because of the harassment.
And that is unfortunately a civil issue.
Correct, but all I'm saying is one sign and all, and all this goes, and then there's no more discussion.
Because then it's not a city street. It is not a city street, so a sign cannot go on it. But if the residents want to put their own sign out there, that is what I'm trying to figure out. If the residents, those three residents want to put their own sign out to East Front Boulevard because it's what they are using as an access, that is why I'm trying to clarify.
I'll even pick for the sign.
The city cannot, but if the, the residents can put their own sign out.
If I heard right, it, but it'd be, the city would have to approve.
Yeah. In, in all likelihood, I'm assuming that sign would be placed within our right-of-way, both either the easement or the right-of-way off of East Front Boulevard. So that's something that would require consent.
They would just use the existing post.
That's outside of that though. The, the existing post, there is no existing post.
Yes, there is.
There's a post that's there.
There's a post. It's not, it wasn't the Lever Street sign.
That's, that's neither here or there though, but if they were to put a sign.
Not confused. The, the post was way up, it wasn't in that Lever Street corner. It was up the street about 50.
There, there's a post that's there. Either who knows why or whatever. But if, the point I'm trying to come across, if the residents want to put their own street sign there at the end of Lever, what's known as Lever Street and East Front Boulevard, can they do that since they are using it as their access?
Again, I, I think we would need to consent to putting anything within the right-of-way. So to the extent that that post is within the East Front Boulevard right-of-way.
Or say they put a new post in.
If it's on their property, I don't think there's anything permitting or, that wouldn't permit them to post something on their property.
Within their allowed easement.
The property it would be on would be Mayor Boss's.
Which is not part of the right-of-way. That's my point. There is no right-of-way on my property to the left of there. If there, if there was, that wouldn't be part of this discussion.
It, it looks like it would probably be on the owner's, doesn't have an address here, but there'd be a pin, a pin number 253323130049. It would more likely be on that, right, that corner, that triangle corner right there.
Can, can we go back to what is the root concern of this whole thing? And that is people not being able to find these three homes. The, the, the main cause of that is the fact that Google Maps and probably other GPS outfits have it incorrect and, and that's what we're trying to fix. So once that gets fixed and Google Maps no longer takes you out to 195th and East Front Boulevard, it takes you Isetta to 194th, which is going to be the quickest way because there is no road to the north. Once that's fixed, assume it's good fixed, I mean, that's what the resolution's for. If that's fixed, what, what is, what is the issue then?
The issue is their address is Lever Street, not the drive, their driveway isn't Lever Street, that private road.
But that's not gonna change. That's a private road.
Technically, there is no Lever Street there.
There had to be at one time because that cul-de-sac has not always been there and they were used that dirt road as Lever Street. It was.
It used to be East Front.
Yeah.
And then they had to change it to Lever Street because there was already East Front and it was conflicting with.
And, and my guess, cause that's really weird, but my guess for that is, cause that was a driveway to just the one house originally.
Years back in the sixties.
So, and we've got plenty of properties like that. So they probably pulled their address because the driveway came off East Front. So, and then, and then I saw the notes about how the post office were, got confused because there's two different addresses or something. And it, that's my guess why they came up with the Lever Street name.
It was because one of the residents could not get a loan for her home, to build her home without a legal address.
And Lever Street are legal addresses and.
Lever Street's not a legal address, it's not a legal street. So that, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming.
The federal post office uses it.
I'm assuming, just like we had a discussion about the plaques or the grids earlier, if you look to the south or what I'm assuming is the south, there is a Lever Street where, uh, let's see, East Front Boulevard goes along the lake and it turns, there's a section that's called Lever Street and then it turns and turns into Isetta and goes out to Viking. That's where I'm assuming a name was gotten because I'm assuming that there is some sort of grid there.
That, that is on the city grid as Lever, on the county grid is Lever Street.
So that's.
And that's why this paved portion, which is a city street, which meets the city right-of-way requirements and everything, is named Lever Street. And going back to our last discussion, if you recall, we showed an old aerial photograph. This essentially was like Steve said, it was a long driveway coming down in. I think Jody's House was the first one built down there. And it was just a driveway essentially and it's before the cul-de-sac on 194th. So this was the only way to access that property. I think it's considered a driveway. Uh, this was before any of the dedication of the public easement and the, and the separation of the private easement. And that's how they were got, they got Lever Street because they had to have a street so they could get an address on that.
They used to have to walk all the way down to East Front to go get their mail, catch the bus.
Oh yeah, their, their mailboxes used to be in my property, all three of those. So, well, you really want to see something strange, why you don't want to trust Google. Look what they call Isetta Street. It's East Front Boulevard. They've got it called East Front Boulevard all the way around. And we know it's Isetta Street.
Good grief.
I know. East Front Boulevard, East Front Boulevard. So they looped East Front Boulevard all the way around. Okay, so back to believing what Google says is a street or not, there's another example of, you know, they don't get everything right.
Google has many errors in the city of East Bethel.
It used to be a lot worse too when they first came out. It was horrible.
I'm not even getting Google.
And to, to give, to give you an example, the, where the Ice Arena is, the Ice Arena is addressed as Highway 65. The storage units down below it are addressed as Aberdeen Street. Now, there used to be the road that came in there. You could access the Ice Arena from 205th, but there was also a little gravel entrance off Highway 65. So when we built a new connection going up to 209th, then that became Davenport Street and it was changed. Then Aberdeen Street is the one in front of the Ice Arena. Google has it listed, I believe, is still Davenport. Uh, so I, I, we can go in and find several instances where.
Well, there's even, there's even times where the cities created confusion and I remember this really vividly is, is when Village Bank came in. Village Bank's address is Highway 65. They are not on Highway 65. They're on Ulysses Street.
And unfortunately, Google's not the only app for mapping.
Have you checked the other apps? I, I don't even know. That's all I use is Google. I don't know what other apps there are.
I got like three of them on my phone.
I, I used MapQuest once and Map. I, I used MapQuest once and MapQuest directed this through one hundred ninety-fifth, East Front Boulevard.
Well, then, well, our next thing's to talk about the resolution, but maybe, maybe we need to talk to more than just Google.
Well, and I think also what we need to do is talk to the county and get them to change that on their GIS, because I think that's what ours is based on. So I think that would be another step we need to take.
That's, that's gonna be a lot simpler operation to change that, so.
So Chris, I got a question for you, you know, I've talked to a couple of the neighbors and, you know, they come up with the thing, well, you know, we don't have Lever Street, we're gonna sue you, do they have any grounds for suing, suing the city?
Uh, if we do.
You know, they, they said if they don't get their sign for that, that gravel road that they could sue because they, you know, they say it's a road, they said, you know, two of them said they would sue the city, I just, do they have any grounds to stand on on that?
Uh, I, I'm unaware of, of what grounds they could have. I mean, I've taken a thorough look at these real estate documents. And what we have is that easement, that's reserved, that's something the city has in perpetuity, should it ever wanna develop a road. Um, but I have never seen a document indicating that this was ever accepted as, as a road or developed into one, so.
Okay, well, I, I mean, they've made the comment, so that's why, I just, you know, I don't wanna get into a big battle or anything, so.
And the, the private agreement that they ended up entering into too, I mean, there had to be cause for that, and I think one of the, the causes for that was the development of, of Lot D. And, or what was labeled in the previous one, Lot D, so they had to secure access to that property. And knowing that they didn't have a public roadway going down there, they had to do in nineteen ninety-four that private easement agreement.
I like Brian's idea. Letting the residents put up a sign. Cause that's all, that's all they're asking.
You're just asking if they could.
I, I'm asking if they could. Uh, it, it's kind of a call it a solution that the city can't because it's not a city road, but uh, the city kinda turns around and this is a private drive and if the residents want to do something that signifies it's a, their private drive or, uh, if it's a private road, that says, hey, here's a sign, I can have it here because this is an access. It's not an official city road. The city didn't put a sign up.
I, I think it comes back to, you know, what's the purpose of it? I mean, we're already trying to get, Google to change the directions to get there on, on regular, on true roads.
I understand, I understand, but they still do have an access there. They still have a legal access.
But why do they need a, a sign?
Uh, it's their legal access. It's their legal access. If they wanna have one, you know, I, uh, I can't see the city putting one up there because it's not a city road.
Yeah, if they do something, well.
But if they do something on their own, well, what the heck?
Well, still, now, then we're just talking about the cost of a sign. Cause we still have to give them permission to put the sign, so. So now we're only talking five hundred bucks for a sign, it's.
Is it five hundred bucks Nate?
For a street ID sign?
Yeah.
Uh, thirty, sixty, four, six hundred? Hundred fifty in material and lever?
Because there was originally a sign there, that's, that's what confused, that's why I'm confused at what, why this is such a big issue. Just let the sign be put back there and let it go back to the way it was.
For all, and this is for me living in a neighborhood for twenty-five years.
I've been there forty-five.
Okay, I've lived in this road for twenty-five years.
Yeah, my ancestors, ancestors founded the city, so what?
I'm just.
Going back to the point.
What, what, once, once Katy's Way was built, that's when use of that road went down. Jody and her son continue to use it, I, 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 I know that. But the reason why that road is so rutted and overgrown is just the fact that it hasn't been driven on for so many years, so.
Yeah.
Because a tree fell.
What's that?
Because a tree fell.
That was last year.
And they went and, no?
Or a year, maybe the year before.
And they went to go, anytime they went to go cut it, trim it, whatever with, with the road.
That, that's still a civil issue.
It's, yeah, but that's, that's the reason why the street has not been used, like it, like they'd like to use it.
But I'm talking twenty years, not two years, so.
So Jack, is there any documentation, cause Jody said she has documentation that that was a road, have you seen anything?
No, the documentation is what we explained before.
That's what that is, okay.
This, this is, this is, this was deeded to the city and recorded as a public road.
Yes.
The city never accepted that as part of their street system.
The city never made it a road.
They never made it a road, but it, 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 it. It, it's deeded as a public road.
At this point, nobody really knows.
I, I, and I don't know who, who installed the sign.
Are there minutes that go back that far?
Oh, no.
We, we have minutes that go back, but they're written, they're not electronically accessible, and it would take a long time to research that to see if there's any action taken.
I've seen some of those minutes, they're like one page.
Yeah, they're, they're not very detailed, some of them either, so. But again, this goes back, and I, I'd have to check and see, this goes back to Jody's house was built in sixty-seven, and I think Mrs. Wilkins' home was built in a year or two following that, and the Lee's home, and I could have these reversed, was built in the early seventies. Flip-flop, that's all, thank you Shelley. So, you know, and, 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 and as Chris said, the reason that, uh, this had to happen is that there had to be legal access to get this property so that they could use this to get an address for Mrs. Wilkins' home. The Lee's property didn't need the access because they bordered, no, this, this was, the Lee's was before this came into being. But the reason it stopped there is in this gave the Lee's access on the private portion and right at the end is the public portion. Again, the, the issue is, and the documentation is in the deeds, and the deeds say thirty feet is dedicated as a public road and it's deeded to the city. It's recorded as such, but the city never accepted this as a city street in their system.
Yes, so we don't know where the sign came from, we don't know where it went. If there may be a sign, that's fine.
There was.
And, so there was, but it's not a city road. It's not an official city road. So the city cannot put up a sign because it is not a city road, but if the residents were to do that, and they have deeded access, well, then, I, I can't see the city saying no to that.
They get their sign. They take care of their own road. All is good. End of story.
And, 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 and the FedEx trucks are gonna still try to go down that road and they can't get down that road.
Well, I, I'm not saying don't, I'm not saying, let's not correct Google as far as a preferred access because this is a paved access that goes to, o- off the cul-de-sac, it is paved access. I believe the fire chief has given preference to this access. And.
He's also giving, not only preference, but he's also giving direction that no East Bethel emergency service vehicles are to use this, or to use Isetta, one ninety-fourth to get to the private section of Lever Street. And also that information has been given to the Inoka County Sheriff's Department and local emergency services.
Because the last time that the sheriff was out, he was brought to the corner of East Front and Lever, and the other officer wound up on the other part of Lever Street where there's not even a house.
Yeah, and, and I asked the fire chief about that, and he says that's because they used Google Maps and they didn't follow the directions that had been given to them by the city.
And so that's where.
If they could put up a sign at the end, and if.
That, that's where a sign at the end of Isetta and.
Yeah, so if.
One ninety-four directional would help.
But if they can have one on East Front, make them happy, and if.
If they wanna put their own one up at, on East Front Boulevard, that's, that's up to them.
Do you need a minute of motion then from Shelley's to?
Well, we've got a motion on the table now.
Uh, what's the current motion on the table?
The. Put the sign up at where it was.
And she just needs a minute to allow residents to put up a sign, is that what?
What's that?
She just needs to make the amendment to allow residents to put up the sign, is that what?
To keep the city out of it or an amendment like that?
Well, it's, it, it won't, well, it could be where it was before. I could, where the sign was before, Jack, if you move your cursor, I'll just tell you where to go, that, that black dot go up about an inch, a little farther, farther, right about there, somewhere in there is where the, the Lever Street sign was. That, that's where it was, it was odd because it wasn't right at the corner.
If they, that is their legal access, can.
No, keep going, you gotta go, it's under the, not that tree, the next one.
It would have to be.
Somewhere right in there is where it was.
Cause all that grew up.
Some sort of sign would have to be within their legal access though, wouldn't it?
Okay, so that brings it down there.
Isn't the pole, the si- the pole of the sign down there where like, where the dirt is, that.
That's, there's a sign post there, but not a street sign post. That's, they're different. The street sign posts are round.
The problem is, is it's grown up so much because when the street sign was there, uh, that was, uh, that was a, a horse pasture.
The front yard wasn't.
The side, the side that borders.
Yeah, that was.
The dirt road.
Yeah, some of the fence posts are still there.
Yep.
But that's not where the Lever Street sign was.
But everything on, on there has just grown in time, in years.
But if they put a sign within their own easement, does the city have a say in that? Because if they have a legal, if they have a legal access, can they describe it? Can they locate it?
I would imagine that the city grants permission for them to place a road sign, the city's granting permission for something to be put up in the.
But if they can put their mailbox out there.
They can put whatever they want on their own property.
Yeah.
The only, the only real thing is the right-of-way on East Front.
Yeah, that's, but I'm, I'm saying, go back up to East Front. They have legal access there. If they wanna put a group of mailboxes out there, could they do it?
On East Front?
Yes.
No, you, they would need consent because
Okay.
You can never assume these maps are accurate.
Yes.
City right, right-of-way most likely, which is why it's, it's depicted as such. Now, we can't confirm that that's city right-of-way because we'd have to take a look at the plat.
The principle being, uh, this is just a roundabout way of if the, the legal access goes out there, would they be able to put a mailbox out there? If they would be able to put a mailbox out there, could they put a, a sign out there that denotes this is the legal access? This legal access, we have deemed it be called Lever Street.
Their, their mailboxes used to be underneath that northernmost tree. Keep going up, right in there, that's where their mailbox is used to be.
But obviously it won't go there. I'm talking about in the legal access.
Within, within what they have for deed.
Within what they have for deed.
Yeah, they're gonna be off the road a little bit there, so.
But if they were to put something there that signifies.
This is us.
But do, do they even need city permission?
It's with, well, we, city has their easement, is there any restrictions of what can be done with them?
But their, their easement, I assume, goes all the way out to the road.
No, it would go to the same. It'd be right there. That's the, assuming that's the right-of-way for East Front, it's essentially the road, so.
There, there are no restrictions on the, the city's easement, the, the only thing that the city's easement says is, I, I, thirty feet for, thirty feet for public road easement, I, I think is how it's phrased on the, on the deeds, it's just within the legal description. There's nothing, no restrictions, no, there's nothing there other than that. So is there?
And, you know, nor- normally I think the point is that if somebody does something within the city right-of-way or a city easement, they have to get a right-of-way permit.
Okay.
Now, that's for city streets, now, maybe because this isn't a city street, that doesn't apply, but typically, if you do something on a city street or a city easement, you have to get a right-of-way permit.
What's that cost? Do you know right offhand?
Three hundred dollars, but, uh, that's, that, that, that's generally for people who are doing work in there.
Okay.
So.
If they have a public access, could that be waived?
You know, I, I. We can always waive these.
Yeah, I, I can agree with Brian, I mean, let them do it, let them do it, and hopefully that takes care of the situ- I don't know.
Cause the city can't.
Can't do it.
Can't call it a street because it is not a street.
Okay.
But if the residents wanna call their access, whatever they wanna call it, then that'd be up to the residents to put something out there to call it, whatever that they wanna call it. I, I guess that's my viewpoint. If, if, if the city allows it.
So, we have a motion on the table, which is a bit contrary to what we're talking about.
Yes, that, that is putting, that is the city putting a street sign out there, correct?
Well, it was i- in the original position, which is definitely with. Not used to being here. There's things in my way. You know, it, it was in the East Front right-of-way, so that's a slightly different motion than what we're suggesting of allowing them to put a sign up within their deeded parcel. So I guess my suggestion is I, either we rescind that motion, make a new motion.
Cause I, I believe your motion would have the city taken some sort of action of putting a sign out.
Yes.
And, and, and it'd be on city property too.
Can I ask a question? What if, um, a historical document surfaces where the city did accept this as a street?
There isn't, I, I think there's a lot of the research was.
I haven't seen anything, uh, if, if I've seen the plat, the original plat, I've seen the easement documents, I haven't seen anything. If, if that document were to surface, I, I would welcome it and be very interested in it, but I just haven't seen it.
Yeah, we can't always deal with what ifs.
I'm, I'm just saying, because I had the county send me a whole bunch of documents, however, I have not had a chance to look at them yet.
Well, if you want to present them to the city attorney.
Like I said, I just, I haven't looked at them all, I looked at some of them.
Earlier you said there was a new document that hasn't been discussed.
I, I said that I have, the county has sent me a several documents and, and one of them indicated that the city had no right to return the property and to do anything with that public road. However, um, I haven't read all the documents and I haven't.
So we cannot vacate it, which means we cannot give it back to the people that originally dedicated it, which were the Merkels and the people that live in the house occupied by April Grekula now, whoever those owners were. Those are the ones that dedicated the easement or the public road. So because of Mrs. Wilkins' right of access over there, we cannot vacate it. So that was just put out there as an option to show that we could not do that.
Right.
I, I will gladly take a look at, you know, what, whatever documents Anoka County has, has been provided. I, I just want to say that I haven't seen anything indicating that this had ever been treated.
Right, and they're still digging stuff up for me, so that's why I said what if. And I'm not saying it's there, I'm not saying it's not there. I, I just asked that question.
Well, we could table everything, table this discussion until Anoka County gets you all the documents that they have. And at that time, if nothing says otherwise, then we can revisit this.
Well, well, let me ask this. You're, if I understand right, you're, you're looking for documents that, you asked about documents that would suggest that the city put up the sign, the street sign, okay. I, I, I will say, just because a street sign went up doesn't mean the city accepted it. Things back in the 60s, 70s were done a whole lot different out in these parts. And, yeah, so.
I have no, I have no problem. I just want the actual facts to be.
But even if the city put the sign in, the city still didn't accept the, the street.
With the documents we have now, but.
Yeah, if there's something different, it says something different.
We can, we can table this whole thing, this motion, the, the, I believe this is mine. We can table this resolution 2030, 2021-39, or.
I don't think you want to do that.
Or we can vote on it and.
Does, does this?
Rescind it, right?
I didn't have the whole thing.
That, so, while we could.
We used to want Google, though.
Yeah.
I think we still want the maps changed.
Okay, okay. I, I was thinking this had directions on the signage.
I think you got a couple of motions here, so.
Yeah, we've had lots of motions on this, so. Twenty, resolution dash 39 just deals with Google's directions.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the next agenda item, yeah.
Okay, so, we could have two potential motions, one to approve resolution dash 39.
That's a separate item.
That, it's, it'd be a separate item.
We haven't touched that yet.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then a, a second motion to table any and all signage until Ms. Urkel gets all of her documents out from Anoka County and for the city attorney to have time to review it. Does, how's that sound?
Yep.
Okay, first, we've got a motion on the floor.
That needs to be rescinded.
It needs to be addressed first.
Was that mine?
That was yours.
So we, we can, we can, we can vote to table the whole matter, and then motion, motion stays till next, whenever we pick it up again. Or we can rescind the motion, because that's not gonna be your motion anyway in the end, right? Because that was putting it back in the original location, which is not what we're talking about. So I think the cleanest.
Let's just make this easy. I will, I'll rescind my motion from the Lever Street sign and make a new motion to table the signage portion of it until Ms. Urkel has time to review the documents from Anoka County.
Okay, there's a motion to table on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and I'll rescind my second of her motion.
Okay. So to the motion to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, it is now tabled. And it's triggered on when you provide additional information. Okay. Now on item G three.
I'll make a ro, a motion for approval of resolution 2139, requesting Google Maps to redirect routes to 19335, 19315, and 19265 Lever Street, Northeast Wyoming, Minnesota, by 509 to, to ensure that life, health, and safety and essential services have updated and accurately directions to these residents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made in second, discussion.
This is not what those residents want. That's all I'm gonna say.
I'm, I'm sorry?
I, I just said this is not what the residents want. That's all I'm gonna say.
The residents want a sign.
Oh, what the residents, I still couldn't hear you, residents want, okay.
Yeah. The residents want a sign on Lever, but the fire, the fire, the fire chief has already made known that he has a preference for access off the cul-de-sac. So whether, either which way, medical services get to their houses.
Yeah, to make deliveries hopefully easier.
That's the delivery, the delivery's the problem.
Yeah, the delivery's the problem, probably, so.
The only thing I want to add or bring up, like I showed Shelley, Google Maps shows I set a street as East Front Boulevard. Do, do we want to include that in the resolution to fix that?
Might as well.
I mean, I, that is the strangest thing ever. Because I don't know how you find the addresses on a set of street, because then they wouldn't exist, right? So, of course, they could try it, I guess. I got a friend that lives on there, but. We'll do that another day then. Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. We're on the staff report.
I have nothing, Diana.
Counsel report, Suzanne.
I attended the planning commission meeting, and everything that happened there happened here, so I have no report on that.
Okay, Tim.
Our watershed meeting was canceled because we didn't get, have a quorum. Fire department, the last two meetings was SCBA refresher, and today they had address recognition where they were giving out addresses, trying to find different houses in the city. So they had a couple of good ones that they had trouble finding. And then we had a booster day meeting last week, and we've kind of got it all layered out here. It's July 17th, Booster Park West. It'll start at 5:30 till dark, food, beer, vendors, live music, featuring the Midwest Mayhem. Music starts at 6:30 and fireworks and dust, and that's it.
Very good. Shelley?
I had a really good meeting. It was great to be live, my first time live here. We had conversations about the Baton Trail. There was two different ways of getting around it or to it. The one went through by some residents' property, they weren't too happy with it. So I think it was going down Baton Street that was decided. Another thing that came up, and it's also been on social media, is the idea of having a dog park in East Bethel. I do have a social media page out there getting people's feedback. And half say yes, half say no. I know there's lots of.
Being on the 21st and otherwise, Happy Father's Day on Sunday to all the fathers out there.
And I have nothing tonight. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, it means adjourned.